Good evening, everyone. It looks like we have standing room only. There are probably seats interspersed throughout the crowd, so please, if you can find a seat, please avail yourself of them. We are capped at 400 people in this room tonight, so I do appreciate everybody allowing those folks who are speaking the ability to speak. So as folks are speaking, if you can keep us quiet, keep the murmurs down as much as possible, we really appreciate it. Before we begin tonight, I want to introduce Deputy Fire Chief Tim Shea. He's going to go over some safety guidelines for us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Devens Common Center. My name is Tim Shea. I am the Deputy Fire Chief with the Devens Fire Department. Before we begin this evening's public hearing, I want to go over a few safety items. The occupancy for this room this evening is 450. That is 350 seated guests along with 100 standing room only. Once we reach capacity, we will not allow anyone else into the room. They will be allowed to be in the hallway, where the occupancy for the building is 700. But once we reach 450, we will not allow anybody else into the room. In the event of a fire alarm activation or the room needs to be evacuated for any other reason, please make note of the egress doors marked with exit signs. We ask you to please keep the side and front aisles open. If anyone requires EMS assistance for a medical emergency, please get the attention of a public safety representative in the room, and the appropriate response will be dispatched. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Davis. I am the Director of the Division of Healthcare Facility Licenseur and Certification of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. With me this evening from the department is Dr. Robbie Goldstein, Commissioner of the Department of Public Health, Judy Bernice, our Licenseur Unit Manager, Walter Mackey, our State Health Inspections Manager, and also joining us from the administration is Alicia Orgway, Under Secretary for Workforce Development. Our hearing this evening is being recorded. If you do not wish to have your comments recorded, you may submit comments by email to hfllicenseaction@mass.gov. I'm going to spell that out. or by fax to 617-753-8089. Again, 617-753-8089. On behalf of the department, I want to thank you for taking time this evening to participate in this hearing. The department is holding this hearing on Stuart Healthcare Systems' proposed closure of Neshoba Valley Medical Center in Air on or about August 31st, 2024. In addition to tonight's hearing, we will be holding a virtual hearing on the closure of Neshoba Valley Medical Center on Monday, August 19th, via a moderated conference call. This evening's hearing provides members of the community with an opportunity to share comments or concerns on the proposed changes in a public forum. Please note, however, that we, the department, are not able to answer questions about the proposed changes during this hearing and are not able to respond directly to your concerns. This hearing is an opportunity for you to state your position for the record and to have your voice heard in front of Stuart Healthcare and the department. Before we begin, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the steps that will follow this evening's hearing. The department will complete its review of the proposed changes and the closure plan submitted by Stuart Healthcare based upon the comments received this evening and those that have been submitted in writing to the department. We will also review the current utilization of these services, the capacity of alternate sites to provide the service, and other relevant information available to make a determination as to whether the closure plan preserves access and health status in the hospital's service area. Based on a review of the plan submitted by the hospital, the department will either approve or provide the hospital with written comments on the plan. If the department finds it necessary to make comments on the plan, the hospital must provide responses to those comments. Before we move on, I'd like to say a few things additionally. Over the last few weeks, Mass Hire Rapid Response Team has been on-site at Carney and Neshoba Hospitals and met with hundreds of workers to provide job services and connect them with job openings. In the next two weeks, Mass Hire Rapid Response will host job fairs at both Carney and Neshoba on August 23rd and August 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The job fairs will include more than 40 healthcare employers in Massachusetts looking for talent. If you are an employee of Neshoba and are interested in job services in any way, please let us know. We will begin this hearing with brief remarks from DPH Commissioner Dr. Robbie Goldstein, followed by a brief presentation from the licensee. Following this presentation, we will provide an opportunity for any local or elected officials from the community to make comment, and then begin calling on those individuals who request to speak this evening. Dr. Robbie Goldstein, Commissioner of the Department of Public Health, will now make a statement on the proposed closure.
Good evening, everyone. As you heard, I'm Dr. Robbie Goldstein. I'm the Commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I want to really thank you for showing up, for your community, and to have your voice heard. I know that most of you are here for deeply personal and emotional reasons. You're here to convey your concerns and your worries and to ask your questions and to share your uncertainties about the future of healthcare in this region. And you're here to express your frustration and your sadness. We, from the department, are here to listen. Two weeks ago, Stuart Healthcare announced its intention to close Neshoba Valley Medical Center by the end of this month. This announcement, this decision by Stuart Healthcare has dealt a significant blow to the town of Air and to the many surrounding communities that have long counted on this hospital as a lifeline. It's a place of healing and reassurance and is an important employer in the region. This decision has offended the healthcare ecosystem in the region, changing where you go to get care, how long ambulances will be on the road, and how your towns and your communities see their future. The people in this room who have gathered, the number of people who have gathered this evening are a clear indication of what this hospital means to the people in this region, what it stands for and what it symbolizes. In this room, there are physicians, nurses, radiology technicians, environmental services, and administrative staff, and so many others who work in Neshoba Valley every day. All of you are heroes of your communities. You've been there. You've been there through the highs and the lows, through diseases and disasters, throughout a summer where you've come to work to do your job and to keep the hospital running. And I want to thank you for your dedication and your perseverance and your commitment. And I want to say that the administration is dedicated to supporting all of the workers at Neshoba and connecting all of them to new jobs as soon as possible. And for those who didn't hear just today, the governor demanded that Stuart may go down its commitment for severance pay to employees as part of any Massachusetts Act. This year marks the 60th anniversary of Neshoba Valley Medical Center and its outstanding service to this region. This hospital has been a trusted healthcare resource for generations in communities where everyone knows everyone, where your nurse is your neighbor. Countless lives have been touched here. Families have looked to this hospital in times of need. Veterans turn to this hospital for care and services. And for six decades, Neshoba Valley has been there for all of them. We are here tonight because Neshoba Valley Medical Center is bearing the brunt of Stuart's financial difficulties. Understandably, this difficult situation feels unwarranted and undeserved and unfair. And it is unfair. I want to be clear with what Steve said earlier. The Department of Public Health does not have the ability nor the authority to prevent or deny closure of this hospital. We cannot force a hospital to stay open, especially if doing so might risk the quality of care delivered or the safety of the patients. But it's our responsibility, our obligation, to see that access to essential health services for the community is preserved when Neshoba Valley Medical Center closes its doors. And we've been preparing for the possibility that some Stuart hospitals might close. We're working with leadership at other hospitals, community health centers, urgent care centers, and community organizations in the areas around Neshoba Valley Medical Center. We're working with town, city, and state leadership to be ready to address any gaps in medical care that could result from the closure. And we're in communication with public health and public safety officials. Unlike large cities that have multiple hospitals and urgent care facilities and community health centers, all within a short drive, in this region, Neshoba Valley Medical Center is the locus of care. When Neshoba Valley closes, the time it will take to get to an emergency department will increase for most, and that's a real concern. I've had and I continue to have discussions with chiefs of area fire departments and leaders of emergency medical services in this region to address the logistics of patient transport. We all acknowledge the impact of this closure to emergency services will be significant. We're working to find ways to minimize delays, to make transportation to other hospitals and healthcare facilities in the region as timely and smooth as possible, and to identify alternatives to hospital-based care that might prevent or avoid ambulance rides after Neshoba Valley closes. Our commitment through this is to make sure that the health and the well-being of the patients and community that Neshoba Valley Medical Center has served are protected and not compromised. As care shifts from one provider to another, we will do everything in our power to safeguard access to critical healthcare, to emergency and urgent care, to primary care, and to specialized services. But tonight, we will be listening. We'll listen to your stories, your concerns, your questions, and your fears. And while we may not be able to respond to you individually, please know your voices are crucial to this process. We need to know and we want to know what you have to say. And I want to assure you, once again, that I am listening. We'll continue to stand with you, to work with you, and to support you through what we know is a profoundly difficult time for all of those who live and work in this very special part of the Commonwealth. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldstein. I will now ask Dr. Octavio Diaz, President of the North Region and System Chief Medical Officer of Stuart Healthcare System, to make a statement on the proposed closure. Folks, please let people speak.
Commissioner Goldstein, Mr. Davis, thank you so much for the opportunity to address this hearing. My name is Octavio Diaz. I am the Chief Medical Officer and President of the North Region for Stuart Healthcare. I want to thank the Department of Public Health for holding this meeting tonight. And I want to thank the members of the public for showing their interest in the needs of the Neshoba Valley community. Emergency medicine physicians have worked in hospitals in the Commonwealth for over 25 years. I recognize the importance of community hospitals and the services they provide. I also recognize the dedication and unwavering commitment of the staff and doctors at Neshoba Valley Medical Center. Closing a hospital is painful, and nothing I can say tonight will make that any easier. But the decision has been made, and now we must move forward while keeping our patients safe.
Please let our speakers speak. Thank you.
I want to emphasize that primary care physicians and specialists, as well as a lab drawing station, will remain open in the medical office building adjacent to the hospital. This means that many patients will not have to change the physician that they have at the present time. While closing the Shova Valley Medical Center is deeply regrettable, it is also unavoidable. The process that brought us to this point... The process that brought us to this point was complex and involved in...
Folks, please let him speak.
Although it was an exhaustive process, it did not yield positive results, and the hospital must close on August 31st, 2024, as directed by the U.S. Bankruptcy Court. We have begun the careful work of ensuring that our patients are transferred or discharged safely and appropriately. That is the sole focus of our physicians and staff and the regional teams supporting them for their work. This is the only way that we can move forward to continue our mission of caring for patients while at the same time taking care of the task at hand. The closure of Neshoba Valley will include medical, surgical, behavioral health, and ancillary services, and the emergency department. By the time the hospital closes, all of our patients will have been discharged or transferred to other healthcare facilities for appropriate care. Today, there are approximately 13 patients admitted to the Shova Valley Medical Center. We have also made plans to provide patients with information they need to access services at other healthcare facilities. We will do that in the following manner. First, our staff is reviewing appointments scheduled after the hospital closes and working with those patients to reschedule their care. Second, we're mailing letters to patients who have Stuart Medical Group physicians to inform them regarding their continued office practice, because the majority of our primary care physicians and specialists are remaining in the area. Third, we are opening up a patient assistance telephone line to answer questions about physician referrals, access to medical records, pending test results, billing and payment questions, lost items, and any other questions that... We will maintain staff in Neshoba to help patients retrieve medical records, have also established a dedicated phone line, and posted medical records request forms on our website that are translated into eight languages. And we will continue to collaborate with the Department of Public Health and ensure patients are safely transitioned. We're also assisting our employees as they seek to find other opportunities in Stuart or other healthcare facilities. We are aware that there are thousands of open jobs in eastern Massachusetts. By living around the room, I recognize the importance that the Shova Valley Medical Center and what it means to this community.
I do not... You all have a chance to speak.
I do not take this lightly. We are going to dismiss the impact that the closure of this hospital will have in so many ways. We want to ensure to transition our employees and our patients as safely and efficiently as possible. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address this.
Thanks, everybody. Before we begin taking comments, I want to let everyone know that this wonderful room will only be available to us until 10:30 p.m. tonight. There's a hot tub at 10:30. With that said, I would ask that each person who wishes to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We need to get through everyone who has signed up to speak, so please, keep your comments to three minutes or less. We will use a timer and alert you when your three minutes are completed. We will begin now by taking comments from your local or elected officials. Our first speaker will be Senator John Cullen... Cronin, sorry. I forgive the senator. Senator John Cronin.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. The harm that is going to occur to this community is easy to predict. It's easy to quantify. And it's easy to blame Ralph Delatorre and Stuart, but tonight, we need to talk about what the legislature, what the governor, what the Department of Public Health, and what HHS needs to do. So I want to start by just talking about some numbers. Forty patients a day in the ER, 15,000 a year. Five to six a day arriving by ambulance, maybe 2,000 patients a year. And that's 2,000 people in this community that share one thing in common. On September 1st, they're going to be at an unacceptable higher risk of a worse health outcome. And that's not acceptable. It's not acceptable to anybody in this room. It's not acceptable to me. So we're two weeks from that date, and they aren't just numbers. They're not just data points. They're our mothers, our fathers, our brothers. They're the people who are in this room. So I have one ask and one charge to the administration, to me and my colleagues in the legislature, to the Commissioner of Public Health, to HHS. Go find us a new operator. This is what it's going to cost the state to keep this facility open and make us do our jobs. Because it's too important and there's too much harm that's going to occur if we fail. So keep the pressure up, keep the heat up. Don't accept that there is nothing we can do. We've got money for plenty of other things. We have money for...
The next speaker is Senator James Eldridge.
So, good evening. I'm State Senator G. B. Eldridge. Have the pleasure of representing the Middlesex and Worcester District. And I want to thank, praise the comments of my colleague and friend Senator John Cronin. And there's a number of state legislators that will be speaking here as well. I want to thank Commissioner Goldstein and the Healy Driscoll Administration executives for having this hearing. I want to echo what Senator Cronin said, is that I hope that those who are here know and people throughout Neshoba Valley and the North Central Mass that legislators that represent this area and our partners, whether in healthcare, municipal officials, public safety, we are not giving up. We will continue to push. A new operator and the fact that there is state money out there that we would like to see as a bridge funding, whether to keep this hospital open or to reach out, to reach out in an affirmative, positive manner to the bidders that we certainly, as legislators, and I know municipal officials get, and I know some public safety officials get, that there are potential bidders out there to save the Shova Valley Medical Center. So what I want to really, first of all, thank, though, is I want to thank all of the healthcare workers, many of them represented by the Mass Mercy Society. And I want to thank the municipal officials who represent towns who almost to a town have passed requests for public health emergencies to be cleared in this region to protect this hospital. Of course, I want to thank my colleagues. And I want to thank all the public safety professionals and leaders who will be speaking shortly to this public hearing. And I just want to step back a little bit and direct this to the Healy Driscoll Administration officials, is I'm looking at people from all over North Central Massachusetts. And from a conversation I just had with Representative Mike Kuchmerich who is here, is that I hope that the Healy Driscoll Administration realizes that this isn't just about what's happened in Shova Valley Medical Center. It's been a gutting of hospitals throughout North Central Mass for two decades. From Beadham Hospital to Burbank to Leominster to now Neshoba Valley. And I want to say, first of all, I need to take responsibility about what we need to do to pass legislation, take stronger action in Beacon Hill, by asking the same thing of our state administration partners and Governor Healy as well. So what I want to say about the Neshoba Valley Medical Center is that representing the Neshoba Valley now for over 22 years, including Shirley, Air, Littleton, Devens, at different times, whether as a state senator or a state representative, is that I know how much this hospital means to everyone. And I would say to those that are newer to the Neshoba Valley region, including possibly some of the officials here tonight, is that what I so appreciate about the communities I represent, the people I represent, is that the people in Neshoba Valley are very modest people, very hardworking people, very community-oriented, and don't really ask that much of state government, right? Don't ask that much. What everyone here has relied upon is a community hospital that we really thought was going to stay open. Okay, a hospital that opened in 1964 that, listening to stories, whether those who came to the State House recently, whether the rally we had last week, is hearing these stories of what a difference the Shova Valley Medical Center makes in people's lives. And that's from doctors who have taken care of many of the people I see out here, to patients, to healthcare workers, to municipal officials, to fire and police chiefs. So what I want to say is that it is an essential service to keep this hospital open. And I want to make sure that everyone here knows what we have asked to the administration, is that we have asked them, and this is in a letter dated August 5th that's been sent to the administration, is reach out to any prospective hospital that are, including Massachusetts Healthcare Networks that purchase both hospitals. And I'm saying that in solidarity with Carney Hospital in Dorchester to declare a public health state emergency. We are in a state of emergency. To provide bridge funding to keep Neshoba Valley Medical Center and Carney Hospital in operation while negotiations for buyers of the two hospitals hopefully can continue. So those are the three things we asked the administration August 5th. And I would say, from meetings that legislators have with Commissioner Goldstein and other healthcare executives early this week, is that we still, I believe, do not even have a closure plan. And I think what my frustration here is, I direct this also to Stuart, is that, so a hospital could close, right? In two weeks. We don't have a closure plan. We don't know what's going to happen. And I think my frustration, if I can say, with the administration is that there's been a lot of focus on blaming Stuart, and Stuart deserves almost all the blame on this. However, you can't also then turn around and say, However, you can't also then turn around and say, well, there's no closure plan because we're waiting for Stewart to write the plan. So even if the state is going to protect vital healthcare services in this region, or it's not. So what I would say is that if we're moving towards very bad news, which we're continuing to fight against, if we're moving towards bad news, we need that closure plan, and we need to explain to everyone here, to the constituents, the tens of thousands of people that live in the Neshoba Valley, North Central Mass, of what is the plan, because we are going to keep fighting until, you know, not just to August 31st, but after August 31st, to keep access to quality healthcare in this region preserved. Thank you everyone for being here, and I know that other elected officials have remarks to say as well. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker will be State Representative Margaret Scarsill.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for turning out tonight. Make no mistake, we are here because of corporate greed at its worst. It is a clear, callous, and chilling reminder of what happens when profit is put before people's lives and healthcare. Stewart Hospital's decision to close Neshoba Valley Medical Center is abhorrent and shows an utter lack of respect for the safety and the well-being of our area. Our first responders have repeatedly warned that Neshoba Valley is a critical lifeline for our small towns, that lives will be lost without this emergency room, and those warnings have been ignored by Stewart Hospital. DPH, please heed these warnings. After draining every last cent of profit, Stewart now sits in bankruptcy court in Texas, a court designed to protect creditors, not patients. Stewart's bankruptcy is both financial and moral. Since Stewart announced a few weeks ago their plan to close Neshoba Valley Medical Center, my office has been hard at work to prevent it. I have personally mediated conversations with potential qualified bidders for this facility, and I've worked with leadership in the State House to identify what additional state resources might be available should a qualified bidder emerge. I also organized a call between Commissioner Goldstein and our local fire chiefs, there were thirteen on that call yesterday. These fire chiefs have departments that transport to Neshoba, and you will hear their sobering testimony. I hope they will be allowed to go next out of deference to their position. My office has pursued every possible avenue available to me as a legislator to keep this hospital open. Tonight, we are calling on DPH to do the same. Do everything you can. Tonight in this room is a tiny fraction of the people who will be affected by this closing, and we are honored to stand alongside the hardworking medical professionals who are fighting valiantly to keep this hospital running in spite of Stewart's negligence. And I am honored to stand alongside our first responders who know the crushing impact this closure is going to have on 911 emergency services. You will hear from some of our fire chiefs who on the call yesterday with the Commissioner said words like dire, significant impact, the collapse of EMS services in this area. As the fire chief in my hometown of Pepperell, Brian Borneman said, "The domino effect of Neshoba closing, especially in this unique geographical area, with increased transport time, longer turnaround, and wait times at other hospitals, will have a direct and negative impact on patient outcomes in all of our towns." Every minute counts when a patient gets transported to the emergency department, especially a critical patient. If you add an additional ten, twenty, or thirty minutes, the patient ultimately suffers. We are here tonight for those patients who relied on this hospital for routine care, for emergency care. Neshoba was their closest hospital, their lifeline. Where are those sixteen thousand people going to go in an area whose other hospitals are already stressed to the max? Our community, our select boards, our council on aging, our boards of health, our veteran services, our mothers and fathers and grandfathers and grandmothers and sons and daughters have come together in opposition to this closure, and we must continue to stand together to make sure the path forward puts people's lives over corporate greed and prevents our region from becoming a healthcare desert. This is a grave concern. DPH, do your job, protect the public health for our region.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Benilson, and I'm the State Representative for ER. I am disgusted of what Stewart has done for many, many years. Have abused basically all of us here in this room, whether you're getting paid, you're the workers who are getting paid just, but the corruption or the mismanagement of those funds, that part of it the state have allocated over, I don't know, over the years, millions and millions of dollars. And my question to leadership is, we found out that they were not being upfront with their, disclosing their finances to us. It's like, why do we even continue, why do we even continue funding them? And one of the responses I received from the House leadership over this because of COVID, and I could understand that. But now the fact that we are, okay, we're not going to give any more money, and then this is what turned around Stewart does to us.
Right.
Right? Now, we don't want to hear from anyone from Stewart here today. And we had a meeting, we had a meeting with the DPH Commissioner, where Senator Eldridge mentioned that, oh, we were waiting for those closure plans. It's laughable, it's laughable. Now, he said he could impose a thousand dollars fine for violating the 120 days notice, if I'm not mistaken. Why aren't you fine, charging them that money? Oh, it's for closure. I don't care. Get every single dime that you stayed to possibly get back. During all this chaos, I received a phone call from a doctor, and he said, then, the best method going forward for a new hospital is for a nonprofit to take it over. Even though we, the state don't get, you know, the people who are in the CEOs, they still get a little more. But at least we don't see those yachts in the face that are moving out of that, we don't go for that, okay? However, you know, I've talked to doctors, nurses, neighbors, chief, police chief, fire chief, they're all here today, and they see more than I do here as legislators, the cost. Now, people are going to die because of a second, a minute, thirty seconds, how long are they going to have to drive? Which hospital are they going to rely on? This is frustrating, frustrating, this is infuriating, and I want the Healy Administration to be engaged in those new, the new bidders, be engaged. I want to see my governor, I want to see the governor of this state to be at that table, to keep him there, save somebody. What is the cost? How much money, how many more billions of dollars of money do you need? Ask them that question. Come back to us, because I'm sure we're going to allocate more money. We have money. Where are we going to prioritize that money? And that's the question. Thank you, everyone.
Before we continue, I know how difficult it is, if we can try and keep comments to three minutes, that would be really helpful, we have a lot of people who need to speak today. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Kuschmerich, I'm the State Representative for Pittsburgh and Ludenburg. And it feels particularly sick and insidious that we're here just a year after having fought and ultimately lost the fight to keep the maternity unit open at Leominster Hospital. And that comes after twenty years of gutting at the hands of greed in the healthcare industry, the entire healthcare system of North Central Massachusetts, from Gardner to Concord to Clinton to Worcester. Here we are yet again, year after year, unfortunately, I see not only my colleagues, but our community members here in this room. It's become like a sick joke for this region. How much should one region have to bear? It's not just about the jobs, it's not just about the economic impact of this region, which will be profound. It's not just about people losing access to healthcare, which they will. We can put all of the extra planning into place, but at the end of the day, the elders, the seniors in our community, the poor, the most disadvantaged, will be the ones that lose access to healthcare. It's not just them. Again, from Gardner to Concord to Clinton and Worcester, the ERs, the essential services of each one of these hospitals will be overwhelmed. They already are, that's right. So here we are yet again, we're talking about preserving access, and behind each one of these stories, for the folks that are about to speak, for each person who has already saved a life in this room, and thank you to each one of our healthcare heroes who are For each one of you, there's a story about a hundred or a thousand lives that you've saved, and for everybody else here, there's stories of maybe just one, or maybe dozens or hundreds more whose lives have been saved in Neshoba Valley. And each of us are reflecting on that tonight. I reflect on the horrible grief of my family when I spent seven days in the ER in Leominster with my mother during the state's now decade-long mental health boarding crisis playing out in our ERs every day. I sat next to my mother in the hospital hallway because there weren't enough rooms for my mother to even get one in the ER, never mind to find an inpatient jerry psych bed somewhere else in the state, anywhere in the state. Appalling, right? And after she was discharged to any number of jerry psych units across the state, which ultimately failed her, she found herself back at Leominster seven days later, waiting again. She ended up at Neshoba. And that ten-day stay changed her life. And there isn't a single day that goes by that I do this job that I don't think about the incredible work of the people that work in mental healthcare each and every day, and the people that work at Neshoba each and every day, that saved my mother's lives and saved people's lives each and every day. We are robbing our community, we're robbing our Commonwealth, and we are robbing our families of the opportunity for lifesaving intervention. We don't deserve just to have access to something, we deserve to have the best of something. And we have it right here, and we're going to fight for it. Senator Cronin said it earlier, we're ready to roll up our sleeves, we're ready to fight on our ends, we're hoping for a dance partner on the other side, but we're not going away. Get mad, get loud, and don't give up. This is a fight worth fighting. And so thank you to the DPH for being here, but we look forward to working with you when we talk about how to keep this hospital open.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Higgins, I am the State Representative in the city of Leominster, and for the last eight years, I've had the proud privilege of representing this great gateway city. And in those eight years, I have seen three sets of essential services closed. First are cardiac and pulmonary rehab, our inpatient pediatric unit, and last summer, we stood shoulder to shoulder with so many of you trying to save our birthing center. This is not the Massachusetts that I thought I grew up in, where we accept the closure of our hospital services. We have some of the best hospital care in the world, and yet too many of our neighbors don't have access to this. And so Commissioner, you've said repeatedly that you don't have the power to intervene. The North Central Mass delegation, after the closure of our birthing center, where we were really grateful for the Department of Public Health at least rejecting the closure plan initially, saying, this is not safe, and this will harm the six hundred families that were giving birth at Leominster Hospital. I hope that you will reject this closure plan again. That there is no acceptable plan that sees a hospital close in Massachusetts. And I hope you will come to us, the North Central delegation have been working on a bill, the biggest question I get from my constituents who show up to these hearings again and again, and thank you to every single person who's in half of this room, is Natalie, why do we keep coming to these? I don't just need DPH to listen, I need them to protect us. And so we introduced, we introduced a bill that if the Department of Public Health deems a service essential, deems a hospital essential to the community, you cannot close it. While it is essential to the community, you have to keep it open. So, thank you all, thank you all for your time, and thank you for letting me be a part
Our next speaker will be the Pepperell Fire Chief, Brian Borneman.
I want to thank the Department of Public Health for holding this forum, thank all the citizens that showed up, especially, I just want to say thank you to the Neshoba Valley Medical Center, especially the ER, because it's where we interact the most. You've done a great job for a long time. This is a crying shame. As I was introduced, I'm Brian Borneman, I'm the Chief of Department for the Pepperell Fire, and I'm responsible for fire and emergency medical services for over twelve thousand citizens of Pepperell, as well as visitors and cooperate throughout the region and in the Southern New Hampshire through multiple and various mutual aid agreements. The Friday, we learned that Stewart Hospital was requesting expedited closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. To say it came as a shock is an understatement. From that moment on, I have not dealt with much else. By the following Monday, we had a meeting of the area fire chiefs and stakeholders to discuss ramifications of the closure and what it means for our region. This hospital means so much to the Neshoba Valley and beyond, there are several things that need to be considered, and unfortunately, we have insufficient time to plan. Several areas will be discussed here tonight about the closure, will have both known and unknown. As Fire Chief of Pepperell to tell you that I have grave concerns is an understatement. I have already submitted a letter to the Commissioner, and copy sent it to most elected officials in the Commonwealth and including Washington DC, on behalf of the Neshoba Valley I'm not going to get into those details further, but it would be obvious what we're concerned about, response times, turnaround, longer wait times, and ultimately, the patient outcomes. For my community, Pepperell, as well as others, we are going to have steep financial impacts which we are just now starting to wrap our heads around. However, we are a little over a month into our fiscal year with unknown costs we have not budgeted for. The towns including Pepperell that have limited reserves and scarce resources to respond to increased demands. This closure will be a fiscal drain on all of us. The state of Massachusetts has committed millions of dollars to Stewart Hospitals to assist transfers to new owners as long as money goes to the hospitals, operating costs, staffing, et cetera, not to Stewart's themselves. This is the right course of action. However, two hospitals are closing, and those communities are left in the wake. On behalf of Pepperell and the other cities and towns impacted by the closures of Neshoba, I am implore the state and Governor Healy to commit funds to help communities that are losing a hospital and going to be carrying the increased demand on our resources. The citizens of the region deserve it. Give us the resources and fiscal support we need to help us continue to protect our One area that probably, there's a lot of impacts here that people just aren't fully aware of, or we're just wrapping our heads around. One of them I'd like to mention is the impact that this will place on 911 dispatchers and local police. on 911 dispatchers and local police departments. Local law enforcement does an outstanding jobs assisting fire and EMS in medical emergencies. With closure of Neshoba and longer response times than we fully expect, our law enforcement will be doing primary medical care longer and more often throughout the region than they currently do. They do a great job, but the longer they are tied up as first responders, the less time they are available to do their primary job of law enforcement. Additionally, our 911 dispatchers now EMD all calls and remain on the line with callers to assist until EMS arrives. They will be tied up longer and more frequently. Each call they are committed to is longer they are unavailable to handle another call. Both law enforcement and 911 dispatchers are true professionals, and we have some of the best in our region. But as chief of an emergency services department, I understand that this closure will have a deep and profound impact on these two professions that many have not even considered. I could stand here and go on for hours about those impacts, but we have a three-minute, women. I just, the Department of Public Health and the governor's office needs to commit to this reason.
This is Chief Team Johnson?
Yes. Air Fire Department. As the DPH Commissioner alluded to, a major impact will be felt upon our EMS system. And what I'd like to do is highlight some of those impacts. Longer response times. With the closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center, emergency medical services will have to travel a longer distance to transport patients to the nearest hospital. Currently in air, we average about 2.4 miles in over 80% of our calls. This increase from 11.5 to 16.8 miles will take us further out of our response area. And those distances don't get taken into consideration, the weather, or traffic. Currently in air, we crossed out two paramedic ambulances having just over 2,000 patient contacts alone last year. So what does that mean for the residents and people we serve? We'll be able to take care of the first two ALS calls, but after that, it depends if one of our ambulances back in the local response area. If not, if none of our ambulance is available, we would rely on mutual aid to treat and transport. When this happens, there's a ripple effect through fire department ambulance services in the most western part of Middlesex County, as well as northern Worcester County. And we anticipate that this may happen more frequently than it already does. Number two, the strain on the emergency departments. The emergency departments of the remaining hospitals will experience overcrowding, making it difficult to treat patients promptly. EMS crews will continue at all times, have extended wall times, waiting for a bed to open up for their patient on their stretcher. And that even happens now with Neshoba Valley Medical Center open. Even last week, they transported on a busy Tuesday evening, and three out of the four hospitals were either, all the beds were taken out, and the waiting rooms were crowded. Number three, there is a financial impact. The closure will also have a financial impact on the towns that are affected throughout the Neshoba Valley area. While this amount is not known, there are additional costs that will occur. Fuel, maintenance, overtime, ambulance replacement costs, to name a few. These additional costs were not accounted for in our current budget cycle and will require any relief our state delegation can offer. In conclusion, the closure of a hospital is a critical event that can disrupt the healthcare system and emergency medical services, leading to delayed care, increased pressure on remaining facilities, and greater health risks for the community. I would ask all of you at the table to do everything within your power to keep the Neshoba Valley Medical Center open. Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be the mayor of Leominster, Dean Mazzarella.
I come with props. Good evening. My name is Dean Mazzarella, head of the city of Leominster. I've been mayor for 31 years. And 30 years. And a cough attack. And for 30 years, I've been coming to hearings like this. And I appreciate the fact that you came out, and the Commissioner, and all. But let me just tell you, your hospital is something special. It is what America dreams of in terms of healthcare. It's like, everyone, if you ask somebody, "What is your dream for healthcare?" You already have it, you deliver it, every day of the week. It's an amazing model. And I don't know you can replicate it. But what you need to know tonight, regardless of any outcome, is you created something special, and that's about the people that work there. So, thank you for doing that. It's an exception. I know everybody's waiting for the closure plan. I've been to so many of these, I could write it for you. Timestamp it, tell you exactly what it's going to be. But most recently, and it wasn't that long ago, the state rep, myself, and many others that were here today, Senator Cronin, were testifying before you on the closure of our maternity ward. Back many years ago, when they closed the emergency room at Burbank, one of the big things, the selling points at the time, was it's less important, I don't want to say the wrong words, it is more important that we get paramedics and EMTs to view it. And that's secondary to where the emergency room is. We can no longer guarantee that. I'm telling you, tonight, guaranteed, no question about it, we can't guarantee to get the people in this service area an EMT or paramedic as quickly as we need to. That's number one. That's the truth. And I asked the functions of region planning authority, and they had to do this quickly, to come up with all the data from the area on the response times. And they're an independent organization, have the skin in the game, they work for all of our communities here. And I'll submit the copy to you, and I believe someone has copies, yeah, oh, bad, they've got copies of the MMPC if you want to get them. And I know a lot of people want to speak tonight, and they're throwing us out of here at 10:30. I've been thrown out of a lot of places. But never a banquet hall. Just kidding. Anyway, when they closed the hospital, and let me just say that one of the things that happened is the Department of Public Health didn't oppose the closing. But we're here tonight for the commissioners. Well, we really have the authority to make some suggestions. I've been there 31 years. I don't have the authority to do everything I do, but I know how to fake it. And you can help us. You have the expertise to help us nationally, to find a partner. There's somebody out there that needs to hear their story that would in a minute say, "This is what healthcare ought to be." You can help us with that. Fake it, if you have to fake it, you can help us with that. One of the things that happened is, and I can tell you what the closure plan is, and that is, it's going to tell you all, we can get somewhere really fast, and we can get you here, you go to the urgent care center. If that doesn't work, they'll pick you up in an ambulance and haul you to one of the other hospitals. That's what it's going to tell you. And then I hope you all find another job somewhere, and this whole thing goes away. And winter, and the holidays come, and everybody just forgets about this. Number one, don't forget about it. Everywhere they go, you go, right? That's the way it's going to be. And my chart's here, and please, don't take any offense, but these are facts. The Department of Public Health listed 10 recommendations for the Department of Public Health report for the North Worcester County Area Essential Services Review Recommendations. Here they are. They haven't done one of them. Not one. Not one. Has the Department of Public Health done? There's the plan. They're going to weigh you all down, hope you all go home. Couple of tralalas, Merry Christmas, wherever it is, and everybody just goes back to the regular world. But I'll tell you what, we've already delivered a baby on the side of the landfill. We've already had two babies that were picked up just recently by Leominster Emergency Medical Services. Deliveries that were too complicated for the emergency room. They had to be taken from the hospital in Rockville, Worcester. But here are the 10 recommendations, and I'll read the one that looks to be the most important. It says, "We're going to review essential service closure process and update statutes and regulations to better protect the patients, safety, expand community information engagement, and sustain access to services over time." It's been 90 months. They haven't done one of them yet. Not one. So, here's the closure plan. Number one, you're not going away, right? You're not going away. And here's the thing, the state delegation is saying, tomorrow they'll show up, they got the cloak. They certainly have cloak up there, they do it with the governor. They're going to, as Jerry Maguire says, "Show me the money." We're going to get the money, we're going to keep the hospital open, right? And we need to provide some assistance to these emergency medical services departments. They can't keep up now. They're very, very modest, they don't complain, I'm telling you. They can't keep up what they have now. Mental health in this state is out of control. They're so compassionate and caring. They'll spend countless hours with people to get them the right services. Vet, mental health evaluations, list the cists for elderly that want to stay in their house and make fun, and then medical. We can't keep up with it now. We're calling, 31 years, 10 years is a cop, 41 years. I've never seen so much mutual aid. And that cuts down on the time that we can respond. We're not going away. The legislation needs to get in here tomorrow with the governor. Appropriate the money to keep this hospital open. And we've got to get some help from the ESPD, the best people. And you all have done just a wonderful job. Thank you.
Mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, Sam Skolian.
Thank you. I stand before you today as the mayor of Pittsburgh, representing a voice for our residents who are fed up with the decimation of our healthcare system at the hands of for-profit private equity. The closure of Neshoba Valley Medical Center is not just another blow. It's a crisis that we can't afford to let happen. We've already seen the devastating effects of healthcare cuts in our region. First, in Pittsburgh, Burbank Hospital was whittled down piece by piece until it was gone. Then, Leominster Hospital began slashing services, culminating in the recent and appalling closure of the maternity department. Now, Neshoba Valley Medical Center is next in line for complete closure. If we don't act now, we will continue to see our healthcare options stripped away, one by one, until there is nothing left. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has been historically the leader in education and healthcare. This should be unacceptable for us. The profit-driven motives of these private equity firms are hurting our residents and driving up healthcare costs for municipalities, leaving our community with nowhere to turn for essential medical care. We are already facing unbearable wait times at the Leominster Hospital emergency room. And with the closure of Neshoba, the situation will only get worse. Our ambulance services are already stretched thin. And we anticipate our local hospital being forced to terminate patients in desperate need of care because they simply can't triage them fast enough. Meaning, our ambulance service is tied up for longer and longer, creating ripple effects for our patients and for our emergency medical personnel. This isn't just inconvenient, it's a matter of life and death. The city of Pittsburgh condemns this closure in the strongest terms. We have already experienced the devastating effects of losing our local hospital, and we know the lasting damage that it has done to our community. We cannot and will not stand by and watch this happen again without lending our voice and our support. I urge this administration and the Department of Health to do everything within its power to keep Neshoba Valley Medical Center open. We need you to stand with us, to fight for us, and to protect the healthcare that our residents deserve. This is a fight for our community's very survival, and we are counting on you to help us win it.
Our next speaker is the Ayr Town Manager.
Good evening. I am Robert Pompren. And I've had the great honor over the last 14 years to be the town manager for the great town of Ayr, which has been the heart and the home of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center since 1964, for 60 years. I have said it since July 26th, I will say it again. The closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center is not a viable option. The fact tonight, this should be a public hearing with all of the parties working together to keep it open. And to echo what Mayor Mazzarella said, we already know what the DPH is going to do. Because frankly, it's the only thing they've been good at lately, which is a closure plan with a date stamped. There is no intention, there is no intention from the DPH, and especially our governor, actions, there's an old saying, "Actions speak louder than words." But inaction, inaction also speaks louder than words. And the Commissioner gave the great words this evening. The governor has been completely silent on this issue. On July 26th, I received the call that the intent was to close. Said that's not a viable option. Clock begins ticking, crickets begin chirping from the governor's office. On July 30th, Senator Eldridge has a huge rally at the Ayr Town Hall. All of, many of you were there.
Right.
Crickets from the governor. Nothing. On August 1st, some of our nurses, thanks to the efforts of Mayor Mazzarella, were able to get 11 minutes with the governor, not her choice, and you get a fabulous draw, Andrea Collet. But what came out of that is the governor said, and you all heard it, "The 120 days should stand."
Yes.
That's the last thing she has said. She hasn't done anything. As far as I know, she hasn't called Judge Lopez. As far as I know, the Attorney General hasn't filed an injunction. Again, empty words. "The 120 days should stand." But what is the governor going to do about it? So tonight, we have a unique opportunity, an 11-hour opportunity. It shouldn't be an 11-hour, but for 25 days, the governor and the DPH not only have done nothing, they have not communicated to you. As said tonight, there is no closure plan. Before we have a public hearing on the closure, shouldn't the state, local, federal leaders, and you as the public have a right to see the closure plan? And we're almost done. What they're going to do is what they do best, is follow their CMR. They have no intention of doing a key thing that I just want to talk about briefly tonight. Tonight, we have a unique 11-hour opportunity, very rare, to do what is not only right, but what is our public duty as public officials.
Right.
The governor took an oath to defend the Commonwealth, that includes its public health. Where is he? Her commissioner, appointed by her, who has perhaps the most direct access to her on this issue, took an oath. But he's also a medical doctor, who also took an oath to do no harm. With the patient. You have 150,000 of them out here in the 17 towns of the Neshoba Valley that are hurting. Relieve their pain. You have the ability to do it. The impacts are very simple. A 60-year hospital is going to be allowed to close in 30 days because some corporate crooks out of this area drove it into the ground. Where is the DPH and the governor protecting us? We need more time. Where is the evidence? He said that first, in order to these nurses, it should stand. What has she done?
Nothing.
What has the commissioner done?
Nothing.
So, the closure is devastating to the public health and the access to this region. And many people have said it, have already said it. So in the interest of time, let's go to what they're going to go to, which is their CMR one oh five, section E, which the gentleman read in the beginning as to what they're going to do. They're going to hear us out, and in fifteen days, they're going to make a determination, even though it's already been made. We all know that. As to whether the discontinued service is necessary for preserving access. You have already heard, preserving access. When this hospital closes, in Air, it'll go from a two-mile trip to eleven point eight miles to Leinster, over sixteen to Emerson, and that's assuming good weather and no traffic, and I'm sure the commissioner and others came through the Concord Rotary. The access issue, the only option to access is to keep the hospital. It's the only thing we have. There is no other alternative. People will die. You all know that.
Yes.
The other thing is, and the health status in the hospital service area. Well, this is our only hospital, so without this, I mean, the health status. In making its determination, the department shall consider the evidence presented at the public hearing, the current utilization of service, and the capacity of alternative delivery sites to provide the service, travel times to alternative service. None of this has been presented, and we're supposed to make a decision. So tonight, in closing, as a Town Manager for the great town of Air, I just want to reiterate my select board passed on August sixth, which Commissioner Goldstein has, as does the governor, and, and you're going to be surprised, crickets. And many of you, the other seventeen towns, my colleagues have adopted this from the Air Select Board. Number one, per Mass General Law Chapter Seventeen, Section Two may declare that a public health emergency exists. She's done it before, do it. Number two, that the governor, per her statements to these nurses right up front in Leinster, with Mayor Mazzarella on August first, that the hundred and twenty days should adhere. Why are we talking about August twenty-third? Use something. But last and most importantly, and I hope this happens, the third thing that the Air Select Board asked for is that the governor work with the federal, state, and local leaders of the Neshoba Valley to develop a permanent transition plan with funding to ensure that it remains open. August sixth. We have the money, we know there's over ninety-one million in the state's rainy day fund. They haven't even asked the towns, they haven't even asked the towns what we're willing to do. We are up, we are imploring in this eleventh hour that the commissioner, the governor, the state delegation, and the seventeen towns, I can get my colleagues together like that. We come together and come up with a transition plan to save the hospital, and stop talking about this formulaic bureaucratic approach under their CMR of, "Let's just close it because Stewart screwed up, they drove it into the ground, not our problem, then move on." In conclusion, in conclusion, I ask the DPH, and this is a direct appeal to Governor Healy, who we have not heard from in twenty-five days.
Crickets.
Crickets, crickets, crickets. But my last point, tonight, as the commissioner and others head to Boston and leave this area, you're going to see banners that say, "Do what is right, not what is easy." It's an eleventh-hour opportunity, because the choice is the governor's and the DPH commissioner. This is their choice. To do what is right, it's going to be hard, it's going to cost money, but here's the good news, we're all here to work with you, but you won't respond. Let's keep it open, let's not do what is easy. We will keep fighting, the town of Air, as Mayor Mazzarella said, is not going away. We will not forget, and we hope in this eleventh hour, let's save this great hospital.
It's hard for me to say this right now, but if I could remind folks, to the best of our ability, if we can try and keep it to three minutes or around three minutes, that would be very, very helpful and important. Our next speaker is going to be, our next speaker is going to be the Air Select Board Vice Chair, Christopher Tavarez.
So I'm Christopher Tavarez, Vice Chair of the great town of Air. It's tough to follow our Town Manager and what he said. One of the first things I thought about was, what's the mission statement of the Mass DPH? It's equitable healthcare for all. If you let this close, you failed your mission. And I think I'm hearing, there's nothing we can do. We don't have the authority, nothing we can do. I hear that from the governor as well. I'm sick and tired of hearing, "Nothing we can do." So let's just quit and go home, right? One of my favorite people in history is Theodore Roosevelt, and he talks about the bully pulpit. That is, when you have a position, you use that, and you fight for what's right.
Right.
So we have all these elected officials here that say they're going to fight for us. I'm an elected official, I'm willing to fight, call me, okay? We will all fight together. I am sick of the silence from Governor Healy. I've invited her to come out and talk to us, we'll drive out to Boston if the ride or, you know, the Concord Rotary is too much for her. So, I'm going to keep this, you know, to three minutes. But, we all have that power. It's been said over and over again, this is America, you elect your public officials. There's another saying, right? "We'll remember November when we vote." If you keep on hearing those crickets, I will gladly stand up with all of you, and we will lead her opponent, Governor Healy, to victory. So, as our Town Manager has said, please reach out and talk to us. Break this silence, otherwise, anyone that is running against Laura Healy in her next election, call me, look me up, I will help you, I will lead the tribe to the top.
Our next speaker, also from the Air Select Board, is Janice Livingston.
So thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Janice Livingston, I am a native born resident and selectwoman of the town of Air. Though I was not born in this particular hospital, I was born in the original Air Community Hospital. As of yesterday, Neshoba Valley Medical Center and I are the same age. I just want to say, we look really good, okay? So you say you lack the authority to the Department of Public Health, you say you have no authority. Well, this room is even more authority, so. But this public hearing is intended to be that you, the Department of Public Health, would hear us out to discuss the detrimental impacts to up to a hundred and fifteen thousand lives. Would the understanding, that you would then make a rational, informed decision. Right. But unfortunately, you, the Department of Public Health, and the Healy administration, based on public comments, or in her case, none, okay? Have already made up your minds and have abandoned us. Make no mistakes about it, this is a public health crisis. Your administration and the Department of Public Health keep repeating that they did not cause the problem that has brought us here today, that we should only blame Stewart Healthcare. Rest assured, we do, but we also blame you. For it is on all of you that we were not warned properly of a problem. For it is on all of you that the moment the federal judge in Texas gave our facility, Neshoba Valley Medical Center, until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to close, that none of you fought it. No appeals, no injunctions, nothing. Instead, all of you shrugged your shoulders, said, "It's not our fault, let's go for ice cream." Which I believe she may have had some yesterday. Months ago, when the rumors started, the administration told us not to worry, that at the very least, the state would ensure that the hundred and twenty-day rule would apply. And yet, here we are, with sixteen days left before our hospital closes. We were given a total of a thirty-day notice. And again, our leadership, you, the Department of Public Health, and our governor, hasn't spoken to us. Sorry, we, the town of Air must have missed your call, okay? There have been no appeals, no injunctions, oh, I'm sorry. You abandoned us. No one from the administration has reached out to the local leaders on a plane. You took, earlier you did, I'm sorry, I asked Robert, um, we didn't get the phone call, sorry. Or asked us what we will need to assist us going forward. We have been left to fend for ourselves. There has been no transparency from this administration regarding this issue. An issue that evidently the administration has been involved in for months. So tell me again not to listen to the theories that Neshoba Valley Medical Center wasn't forsaken months before any of us even knew about it.
Right.
The lack of action, the lack of a desire to act from the state is heartbreaking. But I suppose I'm not too surprised. My mother always told me, "Never look to the government to save you." A hundred and fifteen thousand people now are shaken, worried, scared, disenfranchised, and our leadership has told us not to worry.
Right.
Creating a database. History is riddled with heroic stories of databases. All sarcastic, intended. This hearing is simply because it checks the box that a hearing should happen. But amazingly enough, everyone has skipped over the box of the Massachusetts law requiring hospitals to give a hundred and twenty days before closing. Seems to me that's an important box.
Right.
That the hundred and twenty-day rule will not be followed also causes massive problems for the other hospitals that will now have to absorb us. No orderly transition, that will cause harm to all.
Right.
All of you are so stuck in your box that you cannot see the forest through the trees. The idea that the Department of Public Health is powerless to do anything, well, we will remember that going forward. You lack teeth, you lack a backbone. It is obvious that the closure of Neshoba Valley Medical Center does not impact you directly. Supported by board members who felt it was more important to give a massive salary for a job, badly done, has doomed the many, but so have you. So that is one person supported by a few affecting the many, many. Let me turn that around for you. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. In this room are the human beings that have been abandoned. In this room are the human beings who have been given the message they do not matter. In this room, in your view, are the unwanted stepchildren.
Right.
In this room are human beings from various walks of life who are pleading with you, fellow human beings, to save them. It's like we're in badly made sci-fi movie.
Right.
Soil and green keeps coming to mind, let's not go there. Well, rest assured, we are worthy, and we stand tall today, to ensure you know this. We will continue to stand up, limp, crawl, and hop forward on one foot as we find our new path with no clear help from you or the governor, because that is who we are. These are the faces that will haunt you for your lack of humanity, for your lack of doing what is right. As I stated in the beginning, this hearing is a farce based on your own public comments. You have abandoned us, so to be clear, it is not our fault. It is the fault of a corporation who saw numbers, not people. It is the fault of a lack of clear oversight by our state and federal laws. It is the fault of a governor who did not listen to calls of problems and isn't taking our calls now. You have all had the opportunity to rise to the occasion, to be leaders, you failed. And because of your failure, a hundred and fifteen thousand human beings will be harmed. Rest assured that all of your names will be remembered by families who suffer harm due to your inaction. Neshoba Valley Medical Center should not be closed, it should be given, at the very least, the hundred and twenty days in hopes that a solution can be found. That decision unfortunately relies on you, and you have already told us, "We don't matter." I hope your ice cream melts. And to the Stewart Healthcare executives who caused this problem, let the door hit you in the way out.
So it's really hard being the first non-politician to speak, still a fair thing. First of all, I'm a resident, my family, I've received care there, my family has received care there, my daughter, and now my grandson, so thank you to everybody that works there. But I'm going to speak here as a Leinster police officer, all right? And, before I was an administrator, I was a street cop. Spent a long time working the streets of Leinster, where a phenomenal community. Leinster Hospital serves two of the three largest cities in Worcester County, and many towns around it. If you went in there five years ago, on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, you would see patients in every single room, you would see patients in the hallways, you would see stretchers in the hallways, you would see patients on chairs in hallways. And the nurses, the wonderful nurses and doctors up there trying to do everything that they can for patients. Now, since COVID, it's almost every night, it's nine out of ten. And year after year after year, my almost twenty years at Leinster Police Department, that hospital, if it's not the number one place for our call volume from the Leinster Police Department, it's in the top three or five. So if you are taking everybody from our community out here, moving to Leinster, if Leinster's already almost out of room, then where is everybody going to go? And if you're actually at Leinster, then you're going to start affecting our community. So if Leinster starts to burn, where do the rest of us go? So now you're not only affecting this community out here, you're affecting all that community out there that, that, that is their local hospital. And it's unfair, and you're creating not only a risk out here, but you're creating a risk out there by the ripple effect that this is going to have in every other community. And don't think that when we get called to Leinster Hospital, it's because things are going well. And I'm sure you've got to hear from many nurses at Leinster Hospital about the environment that they have to work in sometimes. And we do our best to keep everybody safe, and I like to think that we do a really, really good job. And I like to think that we do a really, really good job, and the nurses up there do a really, really good job. And I want everyone to know that if this happens, we will do our best to keep everybody safe. And we want you to trust us with that. We really do. But we want you to, we really want you to follow up. And please, keep pushing. Because this has an effect on a lot of communities, not just our community here, but the communities out there. Thank you.
I'd ask to allow Beth Raposa to back up a little bit.
Great. I wanted to say that she can't hear me very well. I'm sorry. I'm trying to project my voice. I have Parkinson's. So after working 59 years or so in the mental health, whose kind of days, I now need my hospital and stuff to be there for me.
Say that again. That was a profound statement.
So after 60-some odd years of taking care of people, I get to come up with the diagnosis of Parkinson's. And it's difficult. And I always thought my hospital would be there for me when I would need to be there. I'm sorry, I don't speak that well. But I absolutely know, I speak on behalf of the nurses and physicians that work directly in contact with me. And they feel that this place has a gem in the rock. It's our hospital. It's our home. It's our family. And the most pitiful thing is that people can't see how bad that is, I think. And I beg to take your word for everybody's sake. I wanted you to know that it's... A lot of people that depend on us. I see them in grocery store every day. I see them in the different facilities around me. And they say, "You're one of the everyone. You're one of the everyone." Maybe that's when you're one of the everyone. My father, I remember. I think they always think we're very invisible. But we're not invisible. This is very important to us. This is our family. This is our family. I met my husband years later. And we're two years later. Still there, right? So this makes two cents for what is worth.
Thank you, everyone. Our next speaker will be from the Groton Select Board, Peter Cunningham.
Please give the board some time, women.
For time.
Thank you. My name's Peter Cunningham from the Groton Select Board. I'll be very brief. It's hard to top what my colleague, Mr. Mayor, said before me. But our board, together with the other boards in this area, have all adopted the resolution declaring this a public health emergency. To the extent that I've been caught in this and understand the proceedings in the bankruptcy court, I'm thoroughly dismayed about the representation that the Commonwealth has had in these proceedings. There's really been no representation. The facts, and in fact, I heard our state senator, Elizabeth Warren, who used to be a law professor that specialized in bankruptcy matters before she became senator. One of the first things that happens in a bankruptcy proceeding like that, if the operator is so incompetent, a trustee is appointed to represent them. That has not happened here. Today, in fact, we heard Steward, I guess they filed some motion to extend the decision on the other hospitals. It's incompetence what's going on down there. And then in the failure of the Healy Trischool administration to adequately represent us and to protect us, when they have the ability to do that, is just, it boggles the mind while that's going on. So Commissioner, I appreciate this is a difficult evening for you, but I certainly call on you and in your department to convey to the governor that she does have the ability to do something about this and to take every action before it's really happened.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker from the Air Board of Health is Pam Papino.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. Thank you for everyone for coming out. This is an amazing show of strength. I'm so proud of my community tonight. I really am.
Right.
My name is Pam Papino. I'm Chair of the Air Board of Health. And clearly, I echo the concerns expressed so well by our select board. There's nothing I can say to improve upon that. Our fire and emergency services director, our public health associates, and Shova Association, Wards of Health, have all done an outstanding job for us, I think, of making our case. So there's really very little that I can add for that, other than to share my experiences as a longtime, really lifelong Air resident and what the hospital has meant to me. Like selectwoman Livingston, I can predate a hospital. Like my brother and sister before me, I was born in a community memorial hospital, which eventually turned into Shova. Just a few months before I was born, doctors in the community memorial were the first to write the news to my parents that their one-year-old son, he lost a leukemia before the year was out. A few years later, what should have been my kindergarten year turned into my hospital year, with multiple stays at the Air Hospital playing off one mauta pneumonia after another. Over 40 years ago, I saw my father alive for the last time as a new patient at Neshoba. Two decades later, my mother's death was pronounced at the Neshoba U of A. Of course, there have also been happier experiences. Almost 10 years ago, the Shova doctors were the first to suspect my husband's shortness of breath was, in fact, a type of coronary artery block which drove for producing a so-called widow make a heart attack. Because of their awesome work, he didn't enjoy the subsequent bypass surgery, but I'm pleased to report I did not become a widow. It's an understatement to say that the threads of Neshoba are intercombing throughout the fabric of my life. In that respect, there's absolutely nothing unique or especially noteworthy about my story. As Air residents, my story is your story. Your story is mine. We all have the same hospital. We are a community. We have the same kind of experiences. Hospital's always been there for us. The staff there. They're not just our trusted healthcare providers. They're our friends. They're our family. Our neighbors, our community. We rely on them. We trust them with our lives. A little something about my town in particular that I'd just like to point out is that the Air's not a wealthy community. I did a little looking at census data and found that we actually have a approximately 7.5% of our population within the level of poverty, which is about 2/3 higher than that of most of our surrounding communities. For the one-two punch, for the other piece of the one-two punch, we also have at around $76,000 a year, our median household income is considerably lower than that of most of the surroundings. When you're only making that much money, it takes a major chunk out of your budget to have to go to a hospital that's by the way. And Bluebird Anderson is $25 to $50, one way. You're $100 in before you even get your COVID. Please, please, we are not a wealthy community. Do everything you can. I applaud you, PH. I applaud the governor. I applaud anyone with the ability to help us keep our hospital open at the bare minimum. Get us those 120 days to properly transition. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Dr. Katie Petrosi from the Air Council on Aging.
The closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center has caused tremendous hardship for the older adults of the Air and create numerous negative operational and budgetary consequences for the Air Senior Center. Older adults rely on Neshoba Valley Medical Center not only for timely access to emergency services, but for routine care for primary and specialty physicians. Though physicians may keep their offices nearby, older adults will be forced to go to distant and unfamiliar facilities for their diagnostic testing, blood work, and routine surgeries that are essential components of care. Many of our aging clients find it physically tiring to visit our small Neshoba Valley Medical Center. A larger, unfamiliar medical campus will be too much, both physically and mentally. Research shows that as we age, we process information more slowly. And therefore, many older adults are more apt to come overwhelmed in this upcoming situation as they deal with the challenges of the Neshoba closure. For many, this will result in trouble processing the information, or lack thereof, rationally, decision paralysis, or worse of all, complete withdrawal from healthcare options and opportunities. Councils on Aging and senior centers will, as they always do, attempt to meet the physical, social, and emotional needs of older adults. The Air Senior Center currently provides over 400 rides per month. We're capable of this volume because rides to medical offices and hospitals have been so short. We're struggling to meet the demand now. There's no way we'll be able to offer 400 rides or even a fraction thereof if each one is nearly an hour round trip rather than the 10 minutes that they are currently. Furthermore, we expect increased demand from, in the form of new clients, those who are currently able and comfortable to drive in town, but will call on the Council on Aging vans rather than navigate Route 2 traffic to Leamester or Concord. Our town budget for personnel and transportation services, as well as our contracts with our regional transit authorities, have been finalized for this fiscal year. Without the 120-day notice, we have not been given adequate time to plan an overhaul of our transportation systems to help provide access to much-needed medical care over a larger service area. In addition to transportation impacts, the Air Senior Center also anticipates increased demand for social services. Seniors on the Steward Mass Health Plan, for example, will need assistance being redesigned, reassigned. As physicians adapt and secure privileges at other hospitals, seniors will need assistance verifying their coverage and making any changes as needed. We also anticipate an increase in emotional and financial stabilization services as seniors try and cope with the upheaval. Each of these client interactions is time-consuming, but they are essential to our mission. We've been given very little time without the 120-day notice to reallocate personnel, time, and responsibilities. And the people who will suffer are the seniors. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ken Martin, Executive Director for the Air Housing Authority.
I'm going to be brief. But I've been the director at the Air Housing Authority for 35 years. I know firsthand the importance of Neshoba Hospital to this community. These sort of low and moderate-income seniors. 25% of our population is in their 60s. 50% are in their 70s. And 24% are in their 80s and 90s. They are the most vulnerable population in the community.
Right.
And we're closing the hospital?
Right.
20 minutes to Leamester could be an eternity for a senior. Because as you age, things become more difficult. And trying to deal with the ride to Leamester that could take 20 or 30 minutes is critical. Now, we have the greatest fire department. The Air Fire Department is the greatest in the Commonwealth, the nation. Tim Johnson and his crew are magnificent. But what the state's doing and the governor is not doing is that you're stopping them from doing their job, which is to save people's lives.
Right.
One of the things we always talk about is, how do we keep seniors out of the nursing home? Because we want them, as they get older, we want them to age in place. But part of the aging place, they need services. Council on Aging, support services. And what's happening in this particular case? We're going to make it harder for them to live in place because they don't have a hospital that they can have the services that they need. It's an important part of this community. How did we get to this point? I'd like to know. As a public housing agency, we're audited all the time. There's so much oversight. Who's in the sense of the justice?
Who dropped the bomb?
And I'm going to end with this. I've been dealing with the state for over 40 years. When they want to do something and the legislature wants to do something, they find a way to do it.
Yes, they do.
So we find money where we need it. We find money for the migrants who need help. We find money for everything else.
Right.
But now, the governor has to act. The legislature has to act to do something for this community. And this is a big community. So I say to the governor, as we heard today, crickets? We don't like crickets. We like noise. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Mann from the Veterans Service Offices Association. Veterans Service Offices Association.
Give you a minute, I'll be brief to you. I'm not an elected politician, so I'm not going to stand up here and tell a bunch. What I'm going to say is, I spent 26 years in the service. I represent Massachusetts Veterans Service Offices Association, which every town has a VSO. In the last week, my phone, my personal cell phone, has rang four times, asking questions that I know you're not going to answer tonight. But I'm going to ask them. What are we doing about the veterans that are going to lose the access to the healthcare that they lost when we closed the temple? What are we going to do? They're going to push it to a system that already has one that's not in the answer. I also want to know, what are we going to do for the veterans that weren't there, that are going to lose their job, that are going to lose their healthcare, that their families are going to lose their healthcare? I made an oath when I was 17 years old, I grew up in this area, to thwart and defend the Constitution and fight against anything that was wrong and unjust. And let me tell you something. It may not be easy. It may not be simple. But you can figure it out and get it done and save this hospital. Because otherwise, you're putting veterans and families and Gulf Star families in jeopardy of not having access to healthcare. And I, as the president of the Massachusetts Veterans Service Office, am going to make you one promise. I only make one. I will be your door every day of this hospital closing. I was going to go to honor, courage, and commitment. You have no honor. You have no courage. You have no commitment. If you hold a medical license, it should be revoked because you broke your people kind of oath. Thank you. Save this hospital. I'm going to let you out of here. Figure it out and get it going. Thank you, save this hospital, and let you out of here, figure it out, and get it closed.
I'm going to be taking comments from the public now, interspersing them with some of the folks that remain from the first group of speakers. So if I can remind people again, try and keep your comments to three minutes or less. We still have quite a few minutes left in time. Our next speaker will be Audra Sprague.
Hi, my name is Audra Sprague. I'm a registered nurse who works at Nishoba Valley Medical Center. I've been in the emergency department for 17 years. I don't want to sit here and rehash all the things that Stuart has done to take every penny out of everything that we have in this hospital and bring us here today. Instead, I believe it's crucial to focus on what's keeping us in this situation and what's moving it forward. We were told by the state that the decision to close Stuart was made, to close the hospital was made by Stuart. But, the decision to allow it to happen is by the state. And when I say the state, I'm referring to Governor Healey, Commissioner Goldstein, Secretary Kate Walsh, and Chris Harding. These are the people that are making the decisions and can change it. It was all made behind closed doors with no transparency whatsoever. And we're supposed to just accept it?
Right.
The state has no meaningful, made no meaningful effort to get any accurate information of how things are run here, how the impact will happen, and what will happen to everyone in this community if this closes. We should not have to be the ones to stand here and justify a need for a hospital and why it's so vital, and why closing it is endangering every single person in this room. We shouldn't be the ones to have to tell the Department of Public Health why. They should be informing elsewhere. We should have intimate knowledge of how healthcare is delivered in this region. None of us should have to stand up and tell you this. You either are shockingly uninformed, or you are informed, and you're acting like you don't know and you don't care.
Right.
The only people you would listen to when it comes to deciding to close this hospital is people that will benefit from the closure. People who will make money from it, who save money. Like Stuart Healthcare, who has no more money in their accounts than at least the onshore ones. So, they want it closed so they don't have to have another dime of debt. Or the CEO of Emerson Hospital, who reached out to the state wholeheartedly and local EMS that they could absorb all the patients in Nishoba and there was no capacity issues. No, that's because it boosts their census, their bottom line. They have money in their pockets from us going there. So, they benefit from our closure. The fact that we have to stand here to plead and keep our hospital open is, to access care is unfathomable. I never honestly thought we would get here. In recent weeks, I witnessed every day on the news, the governor giving money, allocating funds to everybody. Like literally everybody, I feel like it's all I hear. And not a single dollar has been directed to try and resolve this crisis that has been created by the state. They are creating it, and they're not fixing it either, and they're standing back like, you know, "Oh, I'm sorry, there's nothing, we can't do anything to help you." There is a big difference between can't help and won't help. The governor has a responsibility to ensure that all of the residents in the Commonwealth are cared for. She is shirking her responsibility, playing the blame game, hoping that by election time, that we will have forgotten. And I assure you, I won't. I've been asking my husband, he will tell you that I will. You know, what everybody, what is going on here is abuse. It's abuse of every single citizen in this room and this community. I'm a mandated reporter, and I am formally reporting these messages. It's not a complaint, that they're willing and capable bidder for this hospital, and they were informed by the state that they would not receive any financial help. So, they can't do it alone, but the other hospitals are getting this mystery funding. They just want the same thing that the other hospitals are getting. For whatever reason, you're going to do six, sometimes it says five, and not eight. How it was chosen, I have no idea. But, why hasn't the governor proposed legislation to access a rainy day fund to provide bridge funding until another bidder can be found, even if there wasn't one? Or do anything at all to try and push for the 120 days? Zero things have been done. What's the point of being a governor if you can't save a community hospital? The state must stop this closure. You must facilitate bids and keep this hospital open for many reasons that you've heard already and that you'll hear some more tonight outlined. I'm going to introduce my colleague Denise Moes, who's the next speaker, who will speak on the things that we presented to the governor's office briefly in our speech with her, and also to her office formally in writing yesterday. And it's a critical issue of travel times. Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Jenna Montgomery, and then Denise Moniz.
My name is Jenna Montgomery, and I have served as a public health educator and communications specialist with Nishoba Associated Boards of Health for three years now. I was born and raised in North Central Massachusetts, and this region is home to many of my family members and friends. I'm also a licensed independent clinical social worker. I chose to pursue public health work with a deep desire to work upstream and interrupt cycles and conditions that contribute to poor health outcomes for our most vulnerable residents. I am experiencing an unpleasant déjà vu, as it seems like it was just yesterday that I was speaking out in opposition of the closure of EMS Memorial's maternity board in Lemonster in the spirit of preserving essential healthcare access for the residents I serve. This closure will have a drastic impact on our 16-town health district and surrounding communities. Our elderly and underserved residents in rural towns will be hit hardest, particularly in a region without a robust public transportation system. Focusing on emergency services alone, the closure will not only extend travel times, but will result in delays that can mean the difference between life and death. With a population projected to grow substantially in the Nishoba region in coming years, these dangers will only grow in scale as time wears on. As your friendly neighborhood public health educator, I was fortunate to engage in a stroke awareness initiative in partnership with the Nishoba Valley Medical Center last year. During this project, we spoke with a number of medical professionals, EMTs, and citizens who attribute the presence of NVMC with positive outcomes in a variety of emergency situations. As a social worker, I don't have a lot of medical know-how, but I learned how receiving antithromalitics such as TPA within a critical time window can really make or break someone's recovery from stroke, and that time window is small. These medications cannot be administered in an ambulance, they must be administered at a hospital. One local EMT shared his story of surviving a severe stroke himself. He was rushed to NVMC where critical timely life-saving treatments began, allowing him to recover with no functional deficit. Without the presence of NVMC, his story would look very different. We know that in the case of stroke, every minute counts. The acronym for stroke response is FAST, fast, for a reason. An additional 20 to 30-plus minutes to an alternative hospital is an unacceptable risk for our residents. Again, this is all with a focus on emergency services alone, and I want to acknowledge that the consequences of this closure will extend far beyond that. Make no mistake, it may be a small hospital, and it may be a for-profit hospital, but NVMC is a critical lifeline for our community. I'm sick of watching essential healthcare resources leave our state and specifically our region, which was colloquially known as a resource desert when I joined Nishoba Associated Boards of Health three years ago, and during my tenure, it has continued to lose services and resources, and now it looks more like a resource wasteland. In public health, we're supposed to work upstream to prevent conditions that result in poor health outcomes and disease manifestation. This is a tall order in a region of rapidly depleting essential services and resources. I would like to know what we can do to get ahead and stay ahead of this troubling trend. If there is truly nothing that can be done to preserve NVMC's services, we must at least prioritize this problem and keep the conversation going, and challenge state leadership to provide guidance on how our health district and others can be part of the solution.
Our next speaker is Denise, and then Naomi Andrews.
Hey, my name is Denise Moes. I'm a surgical nurse at the Valley Medical Center. Where I worked for 30 years. My role tonight is to address the issue of the impact of the closure on travel times for first responders to transport patients to alternative sites. Every area fire chief and firefighters union president has publicly stated that the region's EMS system and fire departments absolutely cannot handle the volume of transport that will result from initial foreclosure. It will be impossible to safely transport all patients out of the region without loss of life and other permanent negative outcomes. It will be impossible to do this and preserve fire services, recalling that these are more often than not, fire departments, personnel, and equipment that are out of the region for hours at a time. Fire and EMS chiefs in the region and nurses predict that it will be impossible to even cover all the calls locally, given the number of long transport times that will have crews and vehicles out of accessibility constantly. AIR City Manager Robert Pompeon has been coordinating among the several surrounding towns in preparation for the disaster, and can provide statistics and connect the state with EMS and fire chiefs with whom his team has been coordinating. EMS teams and nurses urge the state to stop minimizing travel time and distance by measuring from Nishoba Valley Medical Center. We have to measure from the furthest town on rural roads connecting with the high-traffic Route 2, which is currently used, Nishoba, as a hub and not the origin point for patients in crisis. Fire crews and vehicles needed for firefighting, not only for EMS, will be taken out of service for these runs. Each of the area fire chiefs estimate that one run to Lemonster Hospital or Emerson Hospital in Concord will take a vehicle and EMS fire crews out of accessibility for more than an hour and often for more than two hours. One example is a Pebble EMT crew reported in Nishoba on August 5th that the town of Pebble, on a Sunday night at 10 o'clock, responded to an advanced life support mutual aid call in the town of Grattan. Grattan doesn't have ALS, Pebble does. Pebble went with Grattan, with a patient, to Emerson Hospital, and by the time they returned to their Pebble base, the run had taken 2 hours and 15 minutes. This was a Sunday night with no daytime traffic. The crew said they actually had a quick turnaround at Emerson, and did not have to wait for a bed for their patient. Aside from the fact that these travel times are unacceptable and life-threatening to our community, there is also the fact that the cost of each town, because most towns surrounding AIR, the EMS providers, are the fire department personnel and paramedics, will be exorbitant to cover transport to firefunk places such as Worcester, Lemonster, and Concord. And finally, what about the residents' access to public transportation in our region? There is none. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Naomi Andrews.
Thanks, Naomi. Our next speaker is Naomi Andrews. And then we have Michelle Shavers.
Hi. My name is Naomi Andrews. I'm a nurse at Nishoba Valley, and I want to talk about some major problems that have been, make this closure unworkable. First is the false assumption that our residents in this area can access care at facilities in New Hampshire. Let's remember that mass health stops at the border. Patients with the fewest resources to get to see a doctor, if they find themselves needing to go to Massachusetts, whoops, my spot. Patients with the fewest resources to get themselves to either the region, to other hospitals, and find themselves with mass health cards that won't work in New Hampshire, unless the patient is already in New Hampshire, when they have the emergency, it's not covered. Mass doctors can't write prescriptions for New Hampshire pharmacies. New Hampshire doctors can't write prescriptions for Massachusetts pharmacies. There's a problem. Insurance deductibles for England's rides are huge. Can you imagine what it will be to go to New Hampshire? This is unaffordable for our patients now, just driving to Concord, Lemonster, forget if they have to go to New Hampshire. Next, the next impact of the closure will be the loss of vital outpatient care and services. There will no longer be any non-emergent ancillary care accessible in the region for patients and providers currently using Nishoba Valley. For example, radiology, gone. Ultrasound, gone. CT scan, gone. MRI, gone. Bone density scanning, mammography, gone. Every other week, for a few days, we have a PET scanner, that'll be gone. There will also be a loss of the lab, which for us has really high volume. The doctors in the region can draw the patients' labs, but then they rely on couriers to cover a large, large, geographically expansive area to take their samples. Moreover, the Nishoba lab used to be the regional hub for all the outside doctors' offices until Stuart stripped the business away. They sold the books to quest diagnostics, depressing their own hospital's volume. They limited us. Lastly, one of the greatest impacts of the closure will be the access to psychiatric beds, which provide desperately needed mental health care to our senior population, the fastest-growing segment of our population. The patients in the state cannot get by with the loss of our 20 psychiatric psychiatric beds. It's disastrous when you combine that to the 70 psych beds proposed in the closure for Carney, on top of the 25 former Norwoods psych beds that Stuart promised DPH they would rebuild at Carney, and now all of that is zeroed out. The Stuart, um, DPH has approved at Stuart. I'm not quite there. For a real-world example, we recently had an adolescent psychiatric patient board in our ED for days without a place to go. At the same time, Carney Adolescent Psych Unit ceased to take admissions. Today, we looked at the CAGE Tracker data routinely accessible at Nishoba, it does not have patient identifiers in it, it just numbers of patients in specific criteria, and this is what we found. There were 15 geriatric psych boarders in ED beds, three of them had been boarding for five days. That's a senior citizen waiting for a psychiatric bed, five days. There were two adolescent psych patients in the EDs, one had been boarding for three days, no place to go. The tracker showed a grand total of 36 psych patients in the Stuart ED system. 20 of those were adult boarders. The longest adult boarder that had been in the ED for the Stuart system had been boarding for nine and a half days. Nine and a half days. Disgusting. So, we can't afford to lose a single psychiatric bed in the state. It is clear from what you've heard from me and my colleagues tonight, that closure is a recipe for a public health disaster impacting every aspect of care for our most vulnerable community. Governor Healey, Commissioner Goldstein, you have to act to save this hospital. Closure is not an option.
The president of Nishoba County would like to say a word. No?
Sure. Sure. I did want to just briefly mention, thank you all for coming, we appreciate the support. I've had the privilege of working with this amazing team for 13 years. I'm so proud of you, I've been proud of you since day one. Nishoba is just an amazing, amazing facility, and it's because of all of you, including all of the EMS towns, all the support has been amazing, we just can't, sorry. The idea of not having all of you with us is heartbreaking, we can see that tonight. So, again, thank you. But I did want to talk a little bit about the bid process. So, when it was determined that we were closing, I said to my boss, I said, "Can we go out and find our own bids?" And he said, "Absolutely, you know, no hospital should close, whatever we can do to help find it." And through the process, I went and started with the two organizations that pulled their bids, and the feedback was a little concerning. So, I reached out to our local legislators who are here tonight, and they've been amazing. I've never really worked with all of them, but Senator Elleridge, and I'm sorry to get your title wrong, Margaret Scarsdale, recently John Croman, and the efforts that they've shown to say, "We can do this." Obviously, you've heard it all tonight, but what I want to make note tonight is, we can still do something with a bid. It's not over until there's no bid. So for the healthcare entities that are out there tonight... We need to do it. So, if you're looking for patients to come to the system, I'm going to challenge you to do something better. Come work with us. We're an amazing institution. Step up. We're here. We're ready. The community will support you. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
And the speaker is Michelle Travers, and then we're going to go to Tamara Bedau.
Thank you for being here. Wow. Wow. I feel the Neshoba love. So, I feel it's very important, especially to the Department of Public Health, to know what we do here at Neshoba. We're a big area. We forget to mention some of our services that we provide, not just the inpatient, not just emergency room services, but we have a fabulous occupational health. We provide CDLs and DOT physicals. We do pre-employment screenings, including drug screenings for employment, police department COs. There are many businesses and industries in this community, including the rapidly growing Devens community. We have a board-certified flight physician, which is pretty cool. We have outpatient services. We have an infusion clinic, which is so wonderful for these patients not to have to drive down Route 2 to get their infusion. Pain clinic. We see 300 patients a week. That's amazing. Nephrology clinic, prescription education, travel clinic, flu clinic. We have nurses that would go to these industries and businesses in the community. Mamograms, 3D mammograms. We have 6,000 schedules over the last 11 months, which is huge. I don't know where I'm going to get my mammogram. I'm horrified. I'm horrified. Our screening for colon cancer upwards to 3,500, I think that was the number I had, don't quote me, MRI prostate biopsies. Unbelievable, unbelievable thing that we can do in our hospital for our community. Pulmonary testing, PFT, sleep study, audiology, PTOT, speech, and yes, our gerry psych, oh my God, our gerry psych, 20 beds. 20 beds. I can't say enough. We need the help. Department of Public Health, we need your support. I don't know what else to say. We just need your support. Thank you.
And the speaker is Tamara Bedau, and then Katie Murphy.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here. My name is Tamara Bedau. I'm a registered nurse. I have been blessed to have a 30-year nursing career, 30-plus years, all kinds of things. Currently, I am actually your public health nurse. I work with Neshoba Associated Boards of Health, the community health manager. It's the town, it's a regional health district, includes the town of AIR, and 15 neighboring towns and the community of Devens. I've been, I was born and raised in North Central Mass. Raised my family here, worked in these and surrounding communities for my whole career, taking care of all of the patients that I had the pleasure to take care of passionately for all of those years. Clearly, I have a deep personal and professional investment in the quality of healthcare here. I've always been really proud to be a nurse, especially a nurse in Massachusetts. Our Commonwealth is home to some of the best colleges and universities that are constantly developing these cutting-edge technologies, creating meaningful experiences, and that yields some of the most extraordinary healthcare providers. And these dedicated professionals embody an unparalleled blend of skill, science, and artistry, making Massachusetts a historical mecca of healthcare and its hospitals, world-renowned facilities that they are. Unfortunately, despite our state being so rich with these resources, the North Central Mass region is not. It has the people, not enough providers. As a nurse primarily working with and advocating for at-risk populations in this area, I'm appalled by the utter lack of access that people have to basic healthcare needs. It's a Sisyphean task to secure healthcare for those in need every day. We all know about the dramatic increase in cost of medications, insurance coverages, support services for folks so that they can age safely in their homes. We all know those are massive barriers to wellness, but these issues are just a tip of, just a small, small part of this multifaceted problem. Even when people do have adequate insurance and money, they're still unable to receive the care they need because there's not enough facilities and there are not enough providers available here. There's an assumption that someone could simply go where the care is, but even that basic step is impossible due to the devastating lack of transportation options here. So, I say equity, where are you? Our massive brilliant minds and devoted clinicians have done their part to nurture a culture of social awareness, and they've acknowledged the critical need for more services. So, I truly don't understand how in 2024, healthcare agencies and hospitals are closing. Including the examples of Lemmonster Hospital's Furling Center, even a branch of my own nonprofit agency, the Neshoba Nursing Service Home Care and Hospice, that had been around since 1966, caring for this community had to close. Now, with the impending closure of Neshoba Valley Medical Center, our region, which is already severely struggling for healthcare resources, is directly impacted again. And these hospital agency closings are a symptom of greater healthcare system failures that are traumatizing not only the health of our individuals and communities, but also the dedicated healthcare workers that are trying to survive this storm. Efforts should be focused on support for clinicians and their practice environments to increase healthcare access and services so people in our communities can be cared for in the way that they deserve.
Can you wrap it up, please, Tamara?
Last sentence.
I speak.
Maybe last two. In addition to more providers, we need more facilities to improve equity and access, not less. Our healthcare system needs life support in the form of excellent stewardship and better accountability to preserve and grow the amazing resources Massachusetts and its citizens have to offer. Let's do better.
Thank you. After that, please, Dana Simon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Murphy, the proud president of the Massachusetts Nurses Association, which represents over 25,000 registered nurses and health professionals in the Commonwealth, including more than 3,000 caregivers working in eight of the nine Stewart facilities and 145 nurses here at Neshoba Valley Medical Center. We're here tonight because Stewart and the state have claimed there are no qualified bidders to operate the hospital, and as of now, the administration has agreed to allow the closure, thus leaving AIR, the 15 communities it serves, and a population of more than 155,000 residents without local access to acute care services, including an emergency department and 20 desperately needed mental health beds. The state is allowing this closure at a time when the region's other emergency departments are already overwhelmed with patients and when patients in the middle of an acute mental health crisis can wait for days or even weeks to access a mental health bed anywhere in the state. We're here tonight to state in no uncertain terms that there is no moral or medical justification for this closure. While we are grateful that there's an opportunity tonight for those impacted by this callous decision to share with the department their views on this decision, we are also concerned that you scheduled this hearing with less than seven days' notice and did so on a day when other important news regarding the fate of Stewart hospitals will be announced. This is despite the governor's announcement that she intended to hold Stewart accountable for following the state law calling for 120 days' notice before a closure can take place, which would seem to indicate the state was committed to following the law and, if so, would have allowed more notice to the community you will devastate by allowing this closure. Despite these decisions, just look at the crowd that's come out tonight. And while we appreciate the opportunity to speak with officials here, we are deeply disappointed that the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the Senate President are not here to face and listen to those impacted by their decision not to act to protect them. And as part of this, this community is being told not to worry because the DPH and the state have a contingency plan to ensure the safety of those impacted by this closure. We're here to make clear to the public that the only viable contingency plan to protect the public regarding the closure of Neshoba Valley Medical Center is to not close Neshoba Valley Medical Center. If you have the courage and the willingness to save this hospital and these communities, then you should have the courage and the integrity to be honest about what the true impact of this decision will be for these communities. You need to be honest and tell the public that your contingency plan is to put them in a taxi, or an Uber, or an ambulance to take them to another hospital where that emergency department is overcrowded and the staff is already overwhelmed, trying to care for their existing patient population. You need to tell the public that your contingency plan is for patients who may be experiencing a stroke or heart failure, or someone who has suffered a serious injury will now be forced to travel longer distances for life-saving care, where they will no doubt wait for hours to be seen at another hospital. For the community of AIR, you need to tell that community that your contingency plan is for them to lose one of their largest employers and over 490 jobs, which will have a long-term negative impact on the local economy. And for too many people, the state's contingency plan will be for you or someone you love to die for want of the care this facility has provided for this community for over 60 years. The nurses, I'm almost done. The nurses and health professionals who have held the line throughout this crisis are here today to call on Governor Healey, Speaker Mariano, and Senate President Felka to take whatever steps are necessary to ensure the continued operation of this hospital, including a declaration of a public health emergency to protect Neshoba Valley Medical Center. We also call out our state leaders, including the AG, to enforce state law forbidding hospital closures with less than 120 days' notice, to allow the state and other entities the time to find a provider, to continue operation of these vital facilities, and if needed, to access bridge funding to facilitate the transfer of ownership from the state's $8 billion rainy day fund. To a lot of churches that seek to have a team plan to violate that law and close this hospital by August 31st would represent a public health disaster and the abandonment of patients and community we are all here to protect. The bottom line is that no community is expendable, and as a Commonwealth, we have an obligation and a responsibility to protect this community and these communities by preserving this and all hospitals impacted by this closure.
Thanks, Katie. And the speaker is Dana Simon, and then after that is Nekon Nakagawa.
Evening. My name is Dana Simon. I'm a staff member with the Massachusetts Nurses Association. The state government needs to do whatever it needs to do to preserve Neshoba Valley Medical Center. Every time there is a hospital closure, it's the same thing. The Department of Public Health holds listening sessions, such as tonight's, and then another hospital closes in another working-class or rural community. In 2014, in one of the poorest cities in the state, North Adams Regional Medical Center closed with no notice. What did the DPH or Attorney General Martha Coakley do to the owners? They did nothing. In 2014, Stewart closed Quincy Medical Center, and they broke their contract with the Attorney General and with the people of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a compact in which they promised they would not close that hospital for 10 years. Stewart strangled the hospital before its closure, keeping patients out so that they could tell the DPH that volume was down, exactly what they have been doing here at What did Attorney General Coakley or Governor Baker do to enforce the contract? They did nothing. In 2013, Stewart Morton Hospital in the working-class city of Tonham shut down its pediatrics unit. The DPH ruled that it was an essential service. Stewart shut it down anyway. The state did nothing. In 2017, Morton shut down the Labor and Delivery Department. Stewart strangled the unit so that they could tell the DPH that volume was down. Now, there's a maternity desert around Tonham, and the state did nothing. In 2022, Beverly Hospital closed its birth center, and the state did nothing. In 2023, the same for the closure of the maternity unit in Lemmonster. The state did nothing. In 2023, Stewart closed their detox unit in Tonham, and the state did nothing. Stewart told the Department of Public Health, don't worry about Tonham because we're going to move that detox unit to our hospital at Carney. Once Morton closed, Stewart then said, we're not actually going to open that unit at Carney, and the state did nothing. Now, onto Neshoba. In the spring of 2020, it was the height of the pandemic. There was no vaccine. There was no plan. Stewart shut down the ICUs at Neshoba and Holy Family Hospital with no notice. We demanded that then Executive Office of Health and Human Services Commissioner Mary Lou Studders, that the DPH send inspectors, and we demanded that it be reopened. Studders told us, I called Stewart, and they said the ICUs are open, so there's no reason for me to send inspectors, but they were closed. They had been closed for 45 days in total, when she was being told that they were open. So, we unlocked the doors when we took videos inside the two closed units, showing that there were no patients, and there were sheets over the equipment. I'll wrap up shortly. I want to note that Stewart spokesperson Dr. Diaz spoke for 10 minutes. After proving to the state with videos that they couldn't anymore deny that these units were closed by showing them videos, they sent inspectors who determined that, of course, they were closed, because they were closed, and then they buried the inspection reports. We then had to file a Public Records Act request under the Mass Public Records Act law that was stonewalled. We repeated them, as did the Wall Street Journal, and the state came back and said, the records you're looking for are so voluminous, it will cost more than $10,000. Is the M&amp;A willing to pay $10,000 for these records? Well, we didn't have $10,000 because it was the height of the pandemic, and any money that we had in our budget was going to purchase PPE that neither the state nor the hospitals were providing. In conclusion, the Department of Public Health and Human Services and the governor say there's nothing that they can do. What can we do, they ask? What they can do is save the hospital. Save the hospital.
Save the hospital!
And the speaker is Nekon Nakagawa, and then after that is Bill Marshall.
Hi, you guys remember me?
Hi.
My name is Nekon, sorry, I'm short. My name is Nekon Nakagawa. I've been-- I've been a nurse for almost 30 years. 27 of it, I've worked at Lemonster Hospital. And 20 years of it, I spent in the emergency department. Unfortunately, though, it was my love and I thought I was going to die there myself. I'm no longer in the emergency department. Over more than 10 years, one-third of my career, I have been talking to you guys about the closures and what's happening in North Central. One-third of my career. Between Concord and Athol, primarily in the Lemonster-Fitzburg area.
Into the mic, Niko.
Sorry. I've watched service after service disappear in North Central. Mental health, pediatrics, cardiopulmonary rehab, and our birthing center. Our birthing center, that was supposed to have studies done after they closed it. Our birthing center, which has had negative cephala happen in the community. Babies born in Ubers, Ubers that were supposed to be provided to get people to where they need to go to have their babies. Neshova ED visits are approximately 16,000 a year. Lemonster is already overwhelmed. We can't even absorb half. We can't even absorb 16 of them. 8,000 more with increasing numbers of... We have increasing numbers of verbal and physical assaults against healthcare workers in our emergency department because our patients are overwhelmed. Our communities are overwhelmed and people are angry. They're getting angrier and angrier and angrier because they don't have what they need. It's being taken from them, even when they try to provide themselves. I spent over the last year with another patient, a friend, in Emerson's emergency department. And let me tell you, they're overwhelmed. I've watched EMS stand there 20, 25 minutes waiting to hand off patients. It's unacceptable. That's just increasing the turnaround time for EMS. It's increasing the volume there and people are getting frustrated in Concord in their emergency department. Their equipment's falling apart. Their cabinet doors are falling off at Emerson, right? Now, everybody here knows what they've heard about Emerson, right? And it's not their fault. It's because they're not being taken care of either. Losing 20 more GPU beds, geri site beds in the state is devastating. Now, I know you guys said nine days. I have GPU patients in my emergency department, sometimes more than two weeks. It's appalling. Okay, hold on a second. You guys should know me for why. I should be asking you about your grandchildren.
Take that, white.
Let's talk about what GPU patients are not getting while they're boarding in emergency departments. They're not getting proper nutrition. That puts them at high risk for sores. They're not getting any mental health treatment. None. Neither was any other mental health patient waiting to go to a vet. But for the pediatric and the GPU patients, they start sundowning and there isn't anybody to help de-escalate them because there's just not enough staff anymore. So in order to keep not just them safe, but the pediatric kid that's right next to them, they end up in restraints. They end up getting IM injections in order to keep them safe and to keep everybody else safe. This is what is happening in your emergency departments, people. It's unacceptable. So losing 20 more GPU beds is a crime and it is abuse. It's elder abuse. If we have six ICU beds, we can't lose six more ICU beds. ICU patients are boarding and EDs cross the Commonwealth. There aren't enough ICU beds. Viral season's coming. What's the plan? What's the plan? The other question I have is, I live in Athol. Athol is one of three critical access hospitals. Neshova is more rural than Athol. How do they not qualify for critical access? I don't understand. There's a whole list of federal criteria for critical access. They don't have the access roads to go in and out. They don't have easy accessibility to the next hospitals. Those are two main criteria, so I don't understand. The federal government should be stepping in and designating them as critical access.
And the speaker is Bill Marshall. And then after that is Kathy Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Bill Marshall. I'm chair of the Devon's Enterprise Commission. The Devon's Enterprise Commission is the permitting and regulatory authority overseeing the sustainable redevelopment of former Fort Devon's, now known as the Devon's Regional Enterprise Zone. For the past 28 years, the redevelopment of Devon's has been nothing short of regional economic, environmental, and social success, reinvigorating the local economy by attracting over 120 businesses that employ more than 10,000 people. Many of these businesses and their employees rely on the regional services that Neshova Valley Medical Center provides. The Devon's Fire Department, Public Safety, and Public Works, as well as the surrounding towns of Air, Harvard, and Shirley, Fire, Public Safety, and Public Works Departments and their residents also rely on the close proximity of the Neshova Valley Medical Center for urgent care and support. Medical care for this growing and thriving region is a necessity for our continued shared prosperity. The closure of Neshova Valley Medical Center will have significant economic impacts to Devon's and the region as a whole. We would ask that you explore all feasible options for the hospital to remain in operation to serve the vital needs of this region and protect and expand healthcare in Neshova Valley. The ongoing sustainable growth and redevelopment of Devon's and the surrounding communities in the Neshova Valley region depend upon it. Thank you for your consideration.
And the speaker is Kathy Sullivan. And then after that is Tom Wright. Kathy Sullivan.
Next.
Tom Wright.
Next.
I'm going to say his name wrong, but is it Filoni? Filoni? Demel? Did I say that right? I'm going to tell you what it is.
My name is Flane. During that, I represent 1199 SEIU workers. The American Neshova Valley. And we receive scans. That's 1199. If you have had your food delivered, that's 1199. If you have had your mental checks, your mental health checks done, that is 1199. And we stand angered and disappointed this evening. We wear purple, but we stand with red. Being here today, tonight, represents the biggest medical catastrophe brought on by grief. Yes, grief, irresponsible loans, and also all the things that have always traditionally devalued community hospitals, community healthcare. It has not only a Stewart issue, it is a whole state issue for years and years and years. Reimbursement rate should not differ between where you go for your essential care. It should never be a difference. So we stand disappointed. We stand opposed to the fact that less than 120 days would be given for this community. We stand angry and poor. You will read that in our written testimony. We say the future of care must stay in air. The future of care must stay in air. You will hear from Lori Brandt. You will hear from other Lemon Island healthcare workers because the future of care must stay in air by any means necessary.
Our next speaker is Zach K. And then after that is Deb Sealy. Thank you.
I have to publish this line, Zach. So we had to go home. So my name is Flane. I'm with Monitors of Regional Planning.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. I will be very brief. It's tough to be the cleanup man always and for some reason that's always where I am. I will be very, very brief. I have non-qualifications to speak on the healthcare implications. I consider all first responders and healthcare people, especially since COVID, but before, prize fighters. And I applaud you all. You are incredible people, especially through COVID and helping my parents with cancers and so on. So I applaud you all. I would like to just say that from an economic point of view, I've been 38 years working for rural communities in Massachusetts, in regional planning, local planning, grant writing, economic development. You know, cut me in half and I'm an economic development guy in the core. The economic impacts, the adverse economic impacts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts since the closure of Devon's back to the creation of the Corbin Reservoir, which they all pitched out economic opportunities throughout our Commonwealth outside of 495, outside of 128. And we don't recover. We really don't recover. And in 38 years, with all due respect to all the good officials and people here tonight, when the metals industry started showing signs on Athol, when my parents and relatives, uncle lost jobs in woodshops and gardening, when the paper industry closed in Pittsburgh, when sprayed went out in Pittsfield in North Adams, we don't recover as well in the rural communities in Massachusetts as well as some of our urban partners. Gateway Cities Program, I applaud that under the prior administration, but it took this administration to do something about rural communities and have a rural initiative. So the reality is that we just don't bounce back as nearly as well as the urban centers. And if you need to let us go, send us an email. We'll take care of ourselves because we've really had to take care of ourselves for so long. And that's all I really want to say. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Deb Sealy. And then after Deb is Dr. Paul Harris Simmowitz.
Hi, everybody. I don't have anything prepared, so just bear with me as I have this stream of consciousness about Neshova. I retired from, I'm very proud to say that I retired from Neshova Valley Medical Center after a 36-year career. And as you can imagine, in 36 years, I saw it all. I saw everything. I saw compassionate, caring professional, coworkers and staff who came to work every single day, dedicated to serving the people of Neshova Valley. I saw trustees, volunteers, auxiliary members, people running gift shops, everything when we were a not-for-profit hospital back in the day. I saw physicians who started their careers. They'd just gotten out of the military and their first jobs were at Neshova. And most of them retired from Neshova, totally dedicated. You can't find that at most hospitals. What I also saw, because I retired as Director of Finance, were the horrific changes that took place in our hospital starting 20 years ago, when the state of Massachusetts allowed for-profit venture capital healthcare companies to come into this state and start the rape of our community hospitals. We used to have a standard, Neshova wasn't always viable. Yes, the bottom line, we were thin. We were thin. There were some times where it was truly a financial struggle. But we were that little engine they could and we kept going. We know we think we can. We can do it. We can do it. But paying exorbitant lease fees, paying management fees. We went from the 102-bed community hospital run by trustees and local people that cared about what happened to going under the umbrella, that's us, real Deaconess Medical Center, paying management fees to them. Then we were sold to Tennessee, to a for-profit company in Tennessee in 2001. And the real trouble began because people in Nashville, Tennessee did not care and that company is no longer in business either. I'm happy to say that I left before I became a Stewart employee. I never had to retire to Stewart. But my friends and colleagues that were still at Neshova, they did. And I heard the stories. I heard stories about vendor payments being 90 days? That's nothing. 120 days, 180 days, not getting paid at all. I heard our legislators, Jamie is still here, some of them have left. Please, going forward, get rid of for-profit healthcare in the state. Save Neshova Valley Medical Center for all of the reasons that you've heard here tonight and never, ever let this happen again.
Our next speaker is Dr. Paul Harris Simmowitz and then Matthew Murphy.
I'm Dr. Paul Harris Simmowitz. I've actually been called Dr. H in some places. And I came to Neshova 33 years ago, the beginning of August of this year, coming out of the TUS program, and I wanted to become a community orthopedic surgeon. And I think I have and I've had the incredible, just the incredible privilege of caring for this community over this time. And before this evening commenced, a lot of people came up to me and I've seen a lot of people. I've kind of put back together again. And it's been a privilege to do so. I want to speak to you tonight about community. The community we serve is varied and is widespread and there's a lot of patients there. And to think, what hurts me the most and what I'm most concerned about is that there, our community's healthcare, that they've had for 30 or 40 years. And patients come to me in my office lately, "Where do we go? Where do we go?" But it's been ripped from under them with no notice. And the other community that I found and I valued and I cannot do what I do without the community at Neshova Valley Medical Center from the moment you walk into the hospital, from registration to nursing, to facilities, to environmental care, trying to keep, you know, to keep the place in working order and clean. The servers, the cafeteria workers, because everybody is so caring. And the secret of patient care is caring for the patient, all right? You know, our patients are our families. They're our friends. They're our neighbors. You know, when you come into the emergency department or you come into the surgical department to see a friendly face, to see somebody that you know and are able to talk with, and it really does relieve you. And so to think that this community is going to lose this resource, I think it's just, for me, just a tragedy. The secret of patient care is caring for the patient. I think that's a concept that is... I think that's a concept that is foreign to Stewart health. I can't think honestly of a more greedy and corrupt organization, and I think we all have every right to be angered and sad that we're, especially angered, but sad that we may lose our healthcare here. But I think what's even more disheartening to me is that we, that our administration is letting what Stewart has done, the collateral damage to our communities to spread beyond bounds, and the ripple effect is just going to become more and more significant over the course of time. What I find really, again, disheartening is that the ability, that we have the ability to save the hospital, we have the resources to save the hospital, but we're getting nothing from the administration is morally unconscionable.
Yes.
You know, save, save our hospital, save my hospital so we can continue to take care of our communities.
Our next speaker is Matthew Murphy. And then our next speaker is Diane Jelbert, Matthew Murphy, and then Diane Jelbert. Diane.
I was just somebody coming and don't have anything prepared also, but I moved to this community 25 years ago. I lived in Salem, I lived in Pittsburgh, I lived in Livingston, always had a hospital nearby, and it's just something that you appreciate and you, it gives you peace of mind, knowing that if your kids are at school, have an accident in a sports event or something, you know that they're going to be local, they could be taken to the hospital, to the emergency room, and it's just something that I always knew that, you know, I didn't have to worry about. But now I've lived in Air, moved to Townsend, moved to Pepperell, and I always was able to use this hospital, no matter where I moved to, keep my doctors, keep the hospital, you know, come here for my mammograms, come here for sleep study, come here for x-rays, come here for blood work, come here for whatever other things I needed, and I had peace of mind. I never had a problem with any of the people that worked at it, that agreed, never had a problem with billing or anything like that. It was really, I really enjoyed, you know, having this hospital, and I hope that we can continue to have it. But I just want to say that there, I would think that any parent, any grandparent, anyone that has somebody that has to go to a hospital for routine visits, tests or whatever, it's going to be, they're not going to have peace of mind, just like I won't, if it's like that. Especially if you go meet your doctor and then they say you have to go admit it into a hospital, and then let's say it's 10 minutes from where you live now, now it's going to be 45 minutes. It's not only that, it's people that your family might not be able to go visit you in the hospital. It affects, little things like that, you know, it's not just, it's not just coming to the emergency room or coming for a test, it affects like a whole family. And some people can't drive, and I used, I live in Pepperell and I used the senior center, they had that van for my colonoscopy, and I go out the one-way ride for about $2, and then I had to, you can't drive after you have a colonoscopy, so I had to have a friend who lives a street over to pick me up and drop me home. So the convenience and the peace of mind is something that is really going to rattle a lot of people if we lose this hospital. And anyone who has a kid in school, they break an arm or something, they have to be rushed to an emergency, it's not going to be, which hospital? It's not like knowing, have peace of mind that they're going to come to this local hospital. So I really hope and pray that anytime we, I'm sorry, I lost my train of mind. One thing I wanted to say too, like these, these ambulance, hopefully there will be enough ambulance, and every time my daughter and I, when we're driving and we see an ambulance, we always say, I hope that patient makes it, you know, and now it's going to be everyone will have a much, whatever hospital we go to, we're going to have a much longer ride. Maybe some of you won't make it, and that's really a shame because it's just something you expect to have a hospital near your home. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Reed, and then Lori, and then Laurie Grant.
Hi, everybody. I know we're all tired, and thank you all for being here and supporting us. So my name is Beth Reed. I've lived in Air for 38 years. I've been a diagnostic imaging technologist for 40 years, 35 of them at Neshova, and my colleagues, I've never been more proud of all of you, and you are my friends, not just my colleagues. We serve this community, our patients look for us, they depend on us, they're now crying with us.
Yes.
You've heard everything about the EMS, our amazing EMS teams in this area, and they are so taxed, and I don't need to go over that again. This is personal, personal to us. You are ripping away the livelihood of our people, of our patients, they don't know where to turn, they are horrified, they're in my office crying, saying who is going to take care of us now? This is just unconscionable. Stewart, I don't need to say anything about them. I've been working with them, being an 1199 delegate, I'm so proud of the work I've done in the last six years to support my members and to give them the pay that they deserve and the benefits they deserve, and it's been my honor to do that. And now I feel like a liar. I have told them time and time again, we've had four owners since I've worked here 35 years, what's one more? Everything's fine, don't worry, we're not going to close. This is just unbelievable nightmare. I can't believe that this is actually happening, and our poor patients are the ones that will suffer. If my son has a asthma attack, am I going to get there quick enough to where I'm going? You know, I've CT'd, so many people having strokes, patient outcomes will suffer, people will die. I'm telling you. The EMS people know the devastation that this is going to cause. I'm begging you, begging you to help us save this hospital.
Our next speaker is Laurie Grant. And then Janet Provodakis.
So I have this whole speech planned, but I want to say a few things first. My name's Laurie Grant, and I am the therapeutic group coordinator on the geriatric side unit. Tomorrow, our last patient leaves. No one new comes on for us to take care of. That is our life. The team on that unit is there to take care of those patients, those elderly patients. With Kearney closing and us closing, over 40 geriatric side beds are gone. It is heartbreaking. I spent all last night crying because I thought today was our last day with our patients. It is ridiculous that this is happening. So that was not planned, sorry.
Don't apologize.
I'm also a super proud 1199 member, and I am a delegate. An online fan. I had very little faith that Stewart was ever going to do the right thing. And I didn't think that we were going to stay open because it's a small hospital, and it's not profitable enough in today's world to stay open because our healthcare system isn't a healthcare system, it's an insurance care system. If our government public health, public health cannot stand up to the profiteers of healthcare and put a stop to it, we are all going to be living in a healthcare desert.
We do.
So please, stand up to them, for the love of God. Money is not that important if everyone's dead. Neshova is not just where I work. I live local, I use the hospital, I bring my mother to the hospital, she's 90, she used the pain clinic, fixed her pain. I love the hospital. It works. The people are amazing. All my doctors are at this hospital. I give my life purpose serving the patients at this hospital. I agree. Tomorrow, it stops. The idea of Neshova closing is terrifying for all our towns. Stewart ownership stripped mine of the Stewart hospitals. We know this. Don't let them do the same thing to our staff and our communities. My concern is that because Stewart ownership was terribly corrupt, the state is punishing us.
Thank you.
The president's only a proponent. We know Stewart ownership and investors are awful, and we want to make sure if we do close, which I'm praying we do not, that we all receive our vacation, holiday, and paid time off as well as our severance package. The idea that the bankruptcy court can say that the employees don't matter after 35 years of working at a hospital, that their severance doesn't matter, that their paid time off that we didn't use because they begged us to stay and support the patients and take care of them, and now they say, damn, we don't really want to pay that.
Yeah, we do.
So let's like step up for that, okay? Because Stewart, we know what they do, they suck. Excuse my language.
Do you want to give your word?
I have one.
Thank you.
Don't start, you know. Stewart is yet again trying to avoid the responsibilities and pardon those of us who have done nothing but serve the people of these communities. I want to make sure our state and local officials are not throwing out the baby with the bathwater when it comes to Neshova Hospital. We want Stewart gone too, oh, so badly, but we want the hospital to remain. And for the Department of Public Health, this is a crisis for Neshova Valley. We are here literally begging you, begging you to make sure that we are no longer victimized by Stewart. If you allow Neshova Valley's, Neshova Valley Medical Center to close, you will let our communities continue to be victims of Stewart as well as creating the healthcare desert in Neshova Valley. Please don't let this happen. Focus on the public health of these actual communities and figure out a way to keep Neshova open.
Our next speaker is.
Keep me, you guys!
Our next speaker is Janet Provodakis. And then after Janet is Eleanor Lamb.
I'm a 911 dispatcher, so I do appreciate the awesome recognition that we got from Pepperell, from Air, just to let you know that we are the voice, we are the first first responder, so that when that call comes in, we're going to have to go ahead and work with that family member to give CPR instructions while the ambulance is coming back from Livingston or while the ambulance is coming back from Medicine. All right? That is going to be, I mean, I would imagine many of you have done CPR. How long can you do it for? If you've got one family member who's gone ahead and is able to get that individual on the ground and start giving compression, the most we can do is maybe five minutes? I, we've been very lucky, the EMS personnel have been able to get to, you know, to that house within that five-minute period, even if they've got to go to the other towns of Groton, Littleton. I mean, we have a mutual aid group of those 17 communities, that that ripple effect is going to take, I mean, it's, it's just going to blow up the system completely. So that was one thing I wanted to emphasize. I'm one of nine that work in the Air Shirley Communications Department. We're there 24/7, and we're there because we want to make sure everybody stays safe. The other item that I wanted to bring up is everybody starts talking about 20, 64 years that the hospital's been around. Air has had a hospital since 1912.
Thank you.
All right? This is so important for Devon's to have a hospital close by. It handled the smallpox outbreaks, it's handled the diphtheria, flu, all that, that throughout these years, so over 100 years. And now all of a sudden, you're taking these individuals, where only 36 months ago, we were out on our front porches banging pots and pans and calling them heroes because of all the work that they did for COVID. And now you're going ahead and telling them in 16 days, they got to leave, find a job, you know, you give them 10 days. Where was, I'm going to say, where was treating them like they treat the vets, you know, veterans, where all of a sudden now they're heroes, but we don't take care of them?
Exactly.
So you guys are going to be my heroes because you saved my dad, you saved me, and you saved my son's eyes. So you'll always be heroes in my eyes. And with that, I just want to go ahead and just do one thing. Is this in the alarm clock? Yeah. It's a wake-up call for more appealing of the administration to say.
Our next speaker is Eleanor Lamb, and then Kimberly Connors.
Eleanor Lamb.
Eleanor Lamb has left, Kimberly Connors next, and then Octavia Doreppo.
Doreppo.
Okay, my name is Kimberly Connors, and I am the Executive Director of MassCare, the Massachusetts Campaign for Single-Payer Healthcare, masscare.org.
Yes.
Thank you. We are a coalition of over 100 organizations, including the Massachusetts Nurses Association and 1199 SEIU, and we proudly say and with you against this closure. But we are also the folks who want to end all profit-driven healthcare in Massachusetts. We've been telling state officials for over 25 years, this is where we were going to end up. It doesn't matter whether you call it for-profit or nonprofit, there is profit built into the system. We need it out. I was at the hearing for Kearney's closure two days ago. I started calling it the DPH week. I surely hope this is not the DPH's funeral for Neshova Valley unforayed. It might people come here. The bankruptcy court's ruling authorizes the closure of Neshova Valley. It does not mandate it. It leaves room for new ownership of new leases. We need the 120 days called for by Massachusetts state law that is being circumvented by Texas Bankruptcy Court, you know, they say. that is being circumvented by Texas bankruptcy court, you know, they say they're called the Stewart Shopper Round Four. We continue to insist that Governor Healy must declare an immediate healthcare emergency. Speaker Mariano and Senate President Spilka utilize the state's rainy day funds to maintain hospital operations for the 120 days mandated. And all of that, if that feels, sees the hospitals by eminent domain domain. We have laid out how they can legally do so. And then all of us need to realize that all profit-driven healthcare is gonna continue to devastate our healthcare outcomes. We must establish a Massachusetts healthcare trust and become a single payer state because healthcare is a human heart. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Octavia D'Repo and then Kevin Johnson.
I'm sorry, I'm usually a very good speaker. I'm a little nervous now, a little scared. And I'm quite frankly, yes, dog. Shane Hornview, the person in public health who is supposed to save lives, not let people die, well, I'm gonna tell you a story. My father served in the United States for 27 years in the Army. I am here in Massachusetts because of the hospitals, because of myself. My father, I spent two years in a German hospital with Amnesia. You know what that is? I had to learn everything all over again when I got back to the States. I had to repeat grades. But oh, by the way, we came to Massachusetts because they had the best hospitals, okay? It was like, you went down south and you came north. My father took the initiative to write to Ted Kennedy. One of the best families in Massachusetts. Did everything for everybody when they were lost, by the way. But he helped my father get me here to Fort Devens so I could be connected with Children's Hospital. Here I stand today. I'm 66 years old. I don't think about what I didn't know before I got here because I had good care. I just wanted to say that. Now, in addition to that, we have $1 million in the pandemic fund that's left in the state of Massachusetts. Pandemic fund is for pandemic. It was meant to be used to help people live, to help our first responders, to take care of our hospitals. Where's that money? It's there. I don't want to hear Governor Healy saying that, "Shh, we can't do nothing." That is total, excuse me, BS. So don't sit and look at me like, "Ooh," okay? You knew what time it was when you walked in the door. You knew what time it was before. I'm saying to you, go back and get that 120 days that we're entitled to, okay? I myself am in it. I rely on that hospital. They have saved my life three times. This is not right. Mental health, it's going around right now. Those who didn't have it, it's wrapping up. Okay? I suffer from mental health. I'm even more agitated now. I had to talk to my doctor today. He wanted to give you more medication. I'm all set, okay? Because you're gonna do your job.
Yeah.
Okay? Don't look like that because you know you're all wrong. You weren't sitting up there looking at me like, "Ooh," like I'm crazy. You have got a problem. Get your act together. You get paid to do the job. Do the job. I don't want to see where they, like they were saying. There's no suckers or losers up here. These veterans, they worked hard. Cutler Army Hospital closed down. This is where we went. There's veterans all around here. Laura, the healing, whatever her name is. She sat on TV and told us that we did not have to work, number one. Then she's on TV doing all these great things she's gonna do for the veterans. Well, here's her chance to do even more. And I know you're talking about three minutes, but you know what? It doesn't take three minutes for all of us to tell you exactly what we think of you and what you're not doing. You shouldn't be paid because you're not doing your job.
Our next speaker is Kevin Johnson, and then after that is Amy Shay. Amy Shay. Kevin Johnson. Amy Shay.
Amy Shay.
Amy Shay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Shay and I'm the President and CEO of the Health Foundation of Central Massachusetts. I'm also here as someone who used to live in the Neshova Valley Medical Center service area and someone who recognizes the wonderful community and assets in this region. My family utilized the emergency room when my son was just a few months old. Fortunately, he was fine, and today he is a happy and healthy child on the eve of his 10th birthday tomorrow. Thank goodness the emergency room was available to us when we needed it. Thank goodness my family has always been able to access healthcare when we needed it, when we lived here and in other regions of the state. Not everyone is so fortunate. In rural regions across the country, we face a troubling trend of hospital closures, and we are not immune to that trend here in Massachusetts. Each time a hospital closes, there are health and economic ripple effects that impact a community for years to come. Last month, I visited the site of a former community hospital in a rural community. What I saw was the hollowing out of healthcare services, both literally and figuratively. What was left behind was the empty concrete shell of what used to be a hospital and medical offices. What was left behind was a community with just two internal medicine practices in town, with two physicians close to retirement. There are no pediatricians, no OB-GYNs, no family physicians. If you expand to include neighboring towns, there are a few other options, but many are not accepting new patients or mass health. That hollowing out of healthcare should not be the fate of any community in Massachusetts. We cannot let that be the fate of this community. It has been said that the state lacks the tools to intervene in the closure of Neshova Valley Medical Center. If that is true, then the state must summon all of the other tools at its disposal to invest in the health of this community, not just to put a temporary band-aid on the situation, but to invest deeply and upstream to avoid preventable hospitalizations and to ensure the long-term health and well-being of this region. As the state turns its attention and resources to the sale of the other Stewart healthcare hospitals, do not forget about the patients, workers, and the community here. It has been said that the market has spoken, but the healthcare market has long been recognized to be an imperfect market, and now we see that it is a broken market. I challenge us to change the narrative of the market has spoken. Look around this room. The community has spoken. Let us move together with urgency, with purpose, and with equity and community voice at the center of this next chapter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Jones, and after Rebecca is Barbara Gibbons. Rebecca?
Thank you. I am currently a resident there, but I have lived in Neshova Valley and briefly in the Massachusetts region for 60 years. I remember Neshova Valley Medical Center being built, and I have been a patient there. Basically, since Cutler Army Hospital was shut down and taken away. Even before that, Neshova was the place to go. There are many people in this valley who've been going there their whole lives. You've heard some of their stories tonight. And many of us who have been patients there for years have seen the gradual loss of services as private for-profit owners came in and started just frittering things away. How many of us were sent to other hospitals because you saw specialists that came to Neshova, but they weren't for Neshova? They were with Bed Israel, St. Elizabeth's, Good Sam in Brockton. This got worse and worse when Stewart came in. So maybe you saw them once or twice. You might wait weeks or months to get an appointment because they only had office hours up here occasionally. But if you needed a test or procedure, they often send you to the other hospitals. I myself had to go a few months ago to Good Sam down in Brockton because that's where the doctor wanted me to go for a 10-minute test. It's ridiculous. I'm lucky. I can go. I can get transportation. And I have a spouse who works from home and has flexible hours so that if I could have a procedure, as I have scheduled in a few weeks at St. East, where I need a driver, they can take the entire day off and get me back and forth and not be upset or struggling because we've lost a day's pay. People around here can't do that. They don't have the transportation. Many people cannot afford that extra time off, whether it's to go to longer time to go to Emerson, to sit around and wait at other hospitals, or to wait weeks or months. I spent six months on a waiting list to get a simple test because it wasn't available. The folks in Boston at the big hospitals had the same waitlist. It's ridiculous. Now, don't hold me on this, but when this all came to light about a month ago, and Governor Healy said that she was only going to support six of the eight hospitals, and was going to say, "Too bad, so sad for Carney and Neshova." One of the reasons cited was looking at utilization. I gotta ask you guys, this is off your own website. It was said that Stewart was not submitting financials for years, which you didn't pursue. These are the numbers, the financials off the state CHIA, Center for Health Information Analysis, which contain financials for the individual Stewart hospitals, as well as other hospitals in this state. And I ask you, why? The red flags are here. They were there. These numbers go back years. The red flags were there under Stewart. Why didn't you question that? Why didn't you look into it? Not only that, but pulling up the hospitals that you offered to us as alternatives in this region and comparable hospitals in central Massachusetts. Many of those hospitals have the same scary red flags on here. So what are we gonna do? Are we gonna come back here in a year and be meeting with you again because Health Alliance Cleanness is going to close down, or they're reducing services, or UMass is just going to get rid of Leamster altogether? What are we gonna do then? I'm sorry. I know this is tough on you, but if you want to make it easier and not go through this again, get with it. And by the way, Attorney General Campbell announced on Monday $600 million tobacco settlement payment is coming in this year, with more multimillion-dollar payments in future years. It's supposed to go into the general fund for the state. Uh-uh. That was tobacco, tobacco that affected healthcare, particularly in working-class communities like the one served by Neshova Valley Medical Center. Put that money back into this region. Give it to our EMS departments so they can get more equipment, more staff, more dispatchers.
Rebecca, can you please?
Give it back to the hospital.
Thank you. I just wanted to let folks know, it's now 9:33. We have one hour left before we have to leave this room, this lobby room. So I just wanted to give you that. We're gonna keep going until we get there. Our next speaker is Barbara Gibbons. After that is Marian Oliveras. Barbara?
My name is Barbara Gibbons and I've been there since I was 92. I've lived in the town all my life. My parents have been born here. And they've lived in the town all their life, and my parents were in business here. And I think it's not fair that the hospital is even thinking about closing. We spoke, heard someone speak a few minutes ago about a hospital that's been here since '12. And the building is still in the Town of Ayr. It's on Washington Street. And I think it's a shame that this town, in this day and age, wouldn't close. And it's too bad that somebody can't do something about it.
They can. They can.
They can if they want to. The government doesn't care. I had an appointment on Tuesday in AIR with a specialist. I gotta call Monday. He's not there anymore. You have to go to St. East. What do I do? I don't drive. I'm not driving anymore. I can't do anything about it. And that's just one thing. And I will say that the emergency room in the hospital that I've been to all my life is family. And I think of everybody that's there. They have been wonderful. They've been treating everybody with respect and jovial, and I think it's too bad. We all have to find another hospital. Now, the 15 towns that we have here, that we've worked with, and the persons that have been in Fort Devens and Shirley, come to this hospital. Where were they gonna go? Are they gonna have to go down to Emerson? Are they gonna have to go to Boston? Where do they go? They've been here all the time when they need help. And it's too bad that nobody has even talked about that. The other thing is with the fire department. The fire department has advanced life support. The Town of Ayr does. Surrounding towns don't have it. I had, when I was at work, I had to call the ambulance in Westford. Westford came and picked me up. Westford then had to call AIR for life support. They had to drive to Westford Forge Village to pick me up because Westford didn't have it. And the other towns don't have it. And it's a crying shame that everybody does not support and have something like that in the towns. The other thing that I want to bring is, the next thing we know, the fire departments are gonna have to have more ambulances. We're gonna have to go to the towns, and we're gonna have to vote for new ambulances because they're out of system. They are serving one person and then somebody else needs help. And it's a crying shame to think that the towns will have to go through that. And that's all I have to say, but it better not close or it better be there to help everybody in all these towns.
Our next speaker is Marian Oliveras and then Judy Grant. Marian?
My name is Marian Oliveras. I live here in AIR, sorry. And actually, up until yesterday, I wasn't going to be able to make this meeting as much as I thought. But yesterday, you know the old phrase, poor planning on your part, doesn't... poor planning on your part doesn't constitute an emergency on mine? Well, yeah. Except, yeah, the poor planning does constitute an emergency for me now. I am supposed to receive infusions. Can't get them here. And by the laws and the planning, I can't get them anyplace else. I can't get them in emergency rooms because that's not what they do. I can't get them. I've tried Emerson. No, they can't. The infusion department? No, because the primary care is a credential at Emerson. So I did see the emergency room at Emerson yesterday. The doctor and nurse there were terrific. I got lucky. It was a slow day, which isn't often. And they worked their hardest with hematology and and they managed to get me one infusion. Here I am, I'm blessed for the rest. The best I'm going to do is wait until I'm in bad enough shape, and then I can get a transfusion because the emergency room will be able to do that. Talk about not having a plan. This is way ahead of what any emergency department, I think, in the area thought was going to happen. Because here I am. They found out two weeks ago, and now there's nothing except, "Sorry about that. You're the first one to come in, but you won't be the last." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy Grand, and then Ellen McInnes.
Hi. My name is Judy Grandy. I live in Littleton. I've heard enough talk tonight about why this truly is an emergency situation and a public health emergency situation. I was very discouraged when the meeting opened because the first thing these gentlemen said was they can't do anything about it. And what Governor Haley says is she can't do anything about it. You know what? Why not? Why, of all the hospitals that Stewart wanted to close, did two of them not get chosen to be rescued? And why is all this money going to other hospitals and not to Neshoba? And why on earth can't we get what we need for this huge area that Neshoba covers? I've always had great care here. I've always liked the people I work with. And I really think that this has to be considered a public health emergency because it's going to be a disaster for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Our next speaker is Ellen McInnes, and then Melanie Peven. Is Ellen still? Okay. Melanie Peven? And then after Melanie is Patty Kisson.
Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity tonight to speak with you. I want to commend the town there and all the people that have been working so hard to do their very best to try to keep this hospital open. When I came in this evening, I signed in as a caregiver because I actually sadly had to leave my teaching job in the Town of Air to help take care of my father. And he was, we almost lost him in '21 to a massive suicide attempt. And thankfully, when Leominster Police showed up to his house, the med flight was available. I'm sorry? Oh, so sorry. So sorry. He was able to get the med flight out to Worcester, and he went into emergency surgery where they saved him. And when I hear these stories of ambulance times, I really start to think about how this is really going to affect a lot of us. But I do want to thank the GPU unit at Neshoba Valley Medical Center because they were actually one of the best. And I'm not just saying this either. He has been hospitalized since 2021, 14 times inpatient. And he had the best care at GPU at Neshoba Valley Medical Center. Last year, I was at a health conference at Neshoba Valley Medical Center, and I was able to meet the doctor that was proud of his care. And I apologize, I don't remember his name. But I actually had spoken with somebody on the care team. And they called me personally to let me know what was going on with my father. And the way their approach to care was different by any GPU unit that he's been so far in the state. So I was very pleased. But I'm actually here to speak on behalf of the baby boomer generation. So my parents are 70. My mom just turned 71, and my dad will be 72. And my nana is still alive. She'll be 96. She lives in Leominster. And my other grandmother, the Irish one, she'll be 95. And I think my heart breaks, and I apologize, I forgot my ears here, but this is some data that should be very important for the DPH to keep in mind because you may not see a public health crisis on your hands, say, six months, which I'm sure we will. However, the data is in 2024, an estimated 4.1 billion Americans will turn 65, which is a record number and sometimes called a silver tsunami. This is due to the large number of baby boomers born between 1946 and 1964, reaching retirement age. The surge is expected to continue through 2027 with an average of 11,200 people turning 65 each day. So let's think about this. When you talk about the domino effect, when somebody doesn't receive care in a timely manner, it's either going to be death, or it's going to be their conditions get so much worse that it's going to impact how long their care may take. So Medicare will actually have to be billed for longer stays. So when people start thinking, living insurance companies, and as far as Medicare, this is going to be a crisis. You know, when you, I'm a teacher by heart, and when you, yes. Let me give you one more minute, please. I've been waiting very long to say this. We have a crisis on our hands. And if you think it's going to be a problem in six months, give it a couple of years because you have the biggest population aging. And I fear for my parents' generation. I fear for even my grandparents that are still alive. What are they going to do with the emergency rooms? So I am begging, I am begging Governor Haley and the Department of Public Health to really not look six months out, but look five years out and really consider what crises you're going to have on your hands. You have to be proactive. Closing the Neshoba Valley Medical Center would be an absolute travesty. You have to do everything in your power to find a way to keep it open under another bid, or the state comes in and opens a new state hospital that Duquesne closed a lot in the 80s. We need more hospitals. We need more care. But thank you for your time, and thank you, everyone, for staying here tonight. Your voice matters. You need to make sure that you're writing it and emailing everybody you can. This could be your mother. This could be your father. This could be your sister. It could be anybody that you love dearly. This is a matter of life and test. So please, please do everything that you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patty Kisson. And then that is Tom Kisson. Patty and Tom?
Next.
Our next speaker is Charles Wachovich, and then Darlene Sabina. Charles?
Good evening. My name is Chuck Wachovich. I'm on the select board of the town. We recently met with the chief of the Fire Emergency Services for the Town of Peckham. He informed us of the impending risks to public safety, as well as a significant increase in cost related to transportation with the result of the pending closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. Our chief also informed us that the boards of the district's six chiefs were extremely concerned about the negative impacts that this closure will have on their communities. If the Neshoba Valley is closed, the state and/or Stewart needs to fund these additional costs. These costs are a cost that our residents cannot afford to pay. The state administration and our elected senators and representatives cannot continue to push these types of costs down to our local towns. The state legislature has recently reduced local state aid and is not fully funded education and transportation mandates. It's time for the state administration and our elected senators and representatives to do their jobs, to reassess their priorities, and to fully fund the Neshoba Valley Medical Center transition plan and education. In a recent letter that the select board wrote to Governor Haley, we said in our last paragraph, "The Pepperell Select Board joins our neighboring communities in the region in requesting that you use your authority as governor to declare a public health emergency in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 17, Section 2A, and to instruct the Department of Health to assure the Neshoba Valley Medical Center remains operational." Doing this now can mean a time for an operational plan to be completed to keep the hospital open. That's the most important thing. You have to give a transition funding mechanism so that this hospital can stay open and serve our communities. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Darlene Sabina, and then Barbara Riley. Darlene?
Next.
Barbara. Barbara Riley. Patricia Saint Germain.
Next.
Melinda Stewart.
Next.
Excuse me, this is a difficult name. Anja Hussein?
James Hill?
Tom Lyons?
Tom Lyons.
Marie? Ellen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. I'm on the Council on Aging in Shirley. And I have a statement from the director, who couldn't be here tonight, and then I want to say a few words. This is from the Shirley Council on Aging on the closing of NVMC. Good evening. My name is Kristen O'Brien. I'm the director of the Council on Aging in Shirley and an RN here in the state of Massachusetts. She stepped down from her job to come to run our senior center. I'm deeply concerned about the additional strain on our first responders and their ability to transport residents during acute medical events to appropriate medical facilities, as well as the ability for our other hospital, other area hospitals to absorb these additional clients. Our senior center provided 36 round-trip rides to this hospital in June and July of this year. A one-way trip to Neshoba is 5.5 miles. UMass Leominster approximately 10 miles, and Emerson approximately 20 miles away. This does not take into account the additional traffic that our motor drivers will encounter and drastically limits the number of seniors we're able to serve in the community. It costs our senior center $175 to go to Boston from Shirley, one way. That's for a vehicle or their limo service. It's just getting too much money to get anywhere. And myself, personally, I moved here 22 years ago. I'm from the northern part of New Hampshire, where last summer I broke my shoulder. I went to their community hospital, went right in. They were absolutely perfect. I wrecked my shoulder, and then I had to ride back home to Shirley. And then when I got to my doctor here, I didn't get to see Dr. H. It's not the other guy. And I'm so glad that I didn't have to go far because I was in such pain. And the potholes, I can't imagine being in a dire situation, having to go so far to get pain medication or whatever the problem is. It's just insane to think that this hospital is closing. They also want us to have more population because of the MPTA, because we have the railroad. They want more people to come to our community, many more people. We have one project for 48 houses, just one, Shirley. And they want to be more kids. There's, in our town, right now, last winter at Christmas time, we gave 250 over 80 Christmas bags. There's over 250 people in Shirley over 80. That was last December. Like the lady just said, we're baby boomers. And the train is coming, and we're going to have a train wreck in this community that has the MPTA.
Our next speaker will be Lori Seval, and then Monica Delany. Doris? Monica?
Good evening.
Eleanor Garazi? After Eleanor will be Kathy Mitchell.
Hello, everybody. Good save. My name is Eleanor Garazi. I'm from West Groton. I have post-traumatic stress disorder. I didn't always have it. Let me just back step a second. My husband's with me. He's retired antenna colonist from Fort Devens. Once upon a time, I was the mayor, one of the mayors of the housing areas of Fort Devens. Because I had post-traumatic stress disorder, I have had lots of therapy, been trained when you're in a situation where you've been stressed to step away when you're under five. I'm at an eight. But I'm going to go through this because I feel that I have to speak up. Avoiding is not helping anyone. I just want to talk a cautionary tale because I'm in charge of three generations in my family. My husband, the 65, I'm 67. I have three children, over 38, 36, and 34. And I have two grandchildren I take here that are four and seven. And because I didn't want to speak up, I had looked at my past, my family, my heritage. My grandfather was a naturalized, was a United States citizen here. He was an immigrant from Ireland. He was eight years old. He was part of a mass naturalization at Fort Devens to deploy to France in World War I. My father was the invasion, Normandy Beach, on D-Day. He was deployed from Fort Devens. We lived at Fort Devens for six years. Like I said, I was the mayor. So I'm having to pull my inner strength. But I want to talk about the cautionary tale of, I want everybody to wake up. I want all my neighbors in West Groton to wake up because if the EMTs were here from towns on the Pepperell and Groton, they would know the area that I live in. All three towns come together by 119, which is one of the most dangerous roads in the statewide road. I've witnessed numerous accidents. I can't pull out of traffic safely because of it, but I've seen death. I've seen young people die. I've seen young people die at the intersection of 119 and Townsend Road. We have a person that has mental illness that is on the corner of 119 and Townsend Road that cannot get services because there's just not a place to put this person. Everybody is cranked up. But a cautionary tale is, when we moved to Groton, it was because we had this service here. When my husband, when he got out of the military, he could have chosen any place to live, we chose here. We didn't see this coming, but my understudy at the time had a massive brain mal seizure. The emergency responders from Townsend came because they had advanced support. It was a new cul-de-stake area. They had Sweets mislabeled. They had Lawrence Rive mislabeled the squad cook, so there was confusion. The fire department showed first, and the police department, and then the ambulance from Townsend came. By the time the ambulance got there, my son was already turning blue. They packaged him up, so to speak. They drove him here. I just remember them yelling, "There's no pediatric doctor here. We have no one here." They all blew back in my child, my five-year-old child. They called the helicopter. The helicopter arrived. I just remember, they said, "What is she saying?" I was babbling, I was babbling, I was in such shock. And one, there were only allowed three people on the lifelift, and one nurse was sitting across my five-year-old son's chest, chest compressions. My son had been intubated, and I was hysterical. My husband was in Washington State on military business. I know, I'm almost done. My mother, when I took care of my mother, who was 87 when she passed, her, she accidentally, she was on coma then, she accidentally rocked over the dog's tail. The dog reacted, bit her, she almost bled out. I took duct tape to stop the hemorrhage on my mother's leg. She could not have made it. My son would not have made it. And I live with this emotional and nervousness in my psyche every single day, and I can't afford to have a bad day. What if I break? People tell me things all the time. What about me? I'm 67, I want to live another 20 years. Thank you, thank you for your time.
I just wanted to remind you, we are at 10 o'clock now. We have the room until 10:30. I want to also remind you that we are having a virtual hearing Monday night, the 19th, at 6:00 PM. If you'd like, if we get to 10:30, you haven't been able to comment yet, and would like to join that hearing, you can get that dial-in information at the table in the lobby. So I wanted to remind you of that. Our next speaker is Kathy Mitchell.
Next.
And then Susan Buckles.
My name is Kathy Mitchell, I'm from the town of Shirley. We've talked a lot tonight about mental health, which has been very important. We've talked about seniors, which we've really thought about. But this is an issue that affects all ages. And I want to tell you about something that happened to my family three nights ago. My daughter was taking her, cleaning up her son at Air High School. He was in band. She had her 11-year-old daughter with her and her 3-year-old daughter. Her husband had just come home from work, and he was finishing up his dinner. And his stomach didn't feel so good. And then suddenly, he had severe heartburn. And by his description, and I'm saying this with their permission, he felt like his chest was going to explode. His right arm felt kind of bad. He did a very foolish thing. He got in the car and he drove to the hospital. Well, luckily, he went to a very good hospital. It's one that my family trusts implicitly. He went to Neshoba. Within minutes, he was in the waiting room, he was in a room, and within a very, very short time, they realized that this 44-year-old, normal weight, non-smoking, exercising, healthy-eating man was having a major heart attack. They quickly put him in an ambulance to Lowell, and due to the seamless communication between Lowell and Neshoba, they had the team waiting for him. When he got in the door, they took him right to the cardiac cath lab. He had multiple small blockages. Heredity is a wonderful thing. And he had three major blockages. He had three stents put in. And they were very clear with him that if he had tried to go to another hospital, he would not have made it. And very likely, in a car, he would have taken out somebody else as well. So this is not just a thing that affects the seniors, it affects all of us. And I would recommend to anybody, use the ambulance, but one family that wasn't there, I mean, if we had had to take him in a car, I would be the wait tonight instead of here talking to you.
Our next speaker is Susan Buckles. Jennifer Doyle.
I'm Susan.
I'm Susan. I was too fast, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is Susan Buckles, and I've lived and worked in public health in central Massachusetts for more than 40 years. I've attended more of these hearings than you guys have because I started attending them back when Burbank was decimated. It certainly does feel like deja vu. But what this really is, and it's a testament to the woman who was just up here, what this really is is a coordinated and staged re-traumatizing of our communities. We are imagining, and we know what will happen. Our families will need health care, and we won't be able to bring them to a hospital. So this is traumatizing for us. And let's be honest, we know how this ends. There's no question, we know how this ends. You've invited us here tonight to beg for basic public health services. Is this really how little you think of us? How little the governor thinks of us? I'm taking my time, I'm just going to tell them to stop talking. Governor Haley has said, I heard her say this, that this closing breaks her heart. But does it really? She called the actions of Ralph De La Torre disgusting. She expressed deep frustration over the lack of available options to keep the hospital open. If only she had a job with some executive powers. And I'm so glad that someone mentioned Kate Walsh. It's very important that we don't forget about Kate Walsh. Kate Walsh is the commissioner's boss, okay? It's important that we remember Kate Walsh because this speaks to the mindset of our governor, where her priorities lie and where her loyalties lie. If you don't know, Kate Walsh is the commissioner's boss. She's the secretary of the Executive Office of Health and Human Services. She was appointed by the governor in January 2023. You may have heard her name before. Just four years ago, she was the CEO of Boston Medical Center. And she was in the news in 2020 because after furloughing nurses and healthcare workers, and after receiving substantial federal relief funds, she got herself a raise to $2.3 million for this nonprofit hospital. And that was just four years ago. And now she's overseeing all of this. So no surprise there, right? It's easy to blame greedy opportunists like Ralph De La Torre, Win Brown, Dr. Dixon, and Kate Walsh, especially when her response to this community's tragedy is, "The market has spoken." I'm almost done. But none of these greedy opportunists were elected by us. Governor Haley was elected by us. She has said, "This is not on me, this is not on me, this is on steward." I beg to differ. The most important role of a governor is to ensure the safety and well-being of its citizens. And Governor Haley, Secretary Walsh, and Commissioner Goldsky, this is on you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Doyle, and then Bill Garazi. Jennifer?
Good evening, thank you all for staying. I appreciate the time to talk. Couple things that I have to hear tonight. When I'm not busy being a grandpa, on first night, the Neshoba Valley State here, my family, my wife, and at least five to 10 years on from my mother-in-law's life, and shaving my son's life over the years. They've done a great job, and they need to stay in our community. When I'm not busy being a grandpa, I'm a healthcare planner. Travel around the country. I live at big systems. I used to work at the Parkview Veterans Paris. And listen to the numbers tonight. There is no way that the governor can sit there and say, "We can't do anything." This community, I've lived here for 35 years, has done nothing but grow. It has a house built probably every eighth of a mile. Where I used to see woods, there's new construction, new families moving in, new opportunities for lower-income housing that's all happening, communities have here. And for the governor to say that nothing can be done is a bunch of baloney. So in conclusion, it's not over yet. August 30th is way too short a time to close a hospital that's critical to a community. This needs to be a public health emergency. And I appreciate your time tonight.
Our next speaker is Coriana Patel, and after that is Alyssa Patel.
I want to start by saying, I want to know what emotion I should put on to get through to you guys because we've heard everything from sorrow to anger to rage to sadness, and I don't know what you will listen to to do your job. With that said, I'm going to get into my scripted speech. Greetings, my name is Ren Patel. I'm representing the Youth Advisory Council of Chanahaway's Health Equity Partnership of North Central Mass. It is ridiculous to me that we live in a country where the fundamental right to health care is not guaranteed, but here we are. While Ralph De La Torre, the CEO of Stuart Health, enjoys the Olympic-gaming brands and the lavish Rasallis, we were told two major health centers would be shut down for our Commonwealth. So now we're fighting to keep this medical center afloat. We're fighting to ensure over 490 people are laid off, and we're fighting to maintain the public safety and health of our communities. Such injustice backed by corporate greed is despicable, and this isn't anything new. We've heard it time and time again from everyone in this room. The state claims that there's very little they can do, and this highlights the issue with privatizing health care under a four-private organization to begin with. But now that we're here, we might as well deal with the consequences. And that is, the state can do something. We appreciate the administration trying to hold Stewart to the 120-day notice, but relying on borrowed time is completely unreliable. The clock is ticking. It is near impossible to find a new health care provider, and Stewart demands that we do this within 16 days. Stewart will not budge in this stalemate of a legal war, so I don't know why we're putting the responsibility on them. I don't know why we're trying to rely on them to do something. The state needs to take action. Massachusetts must declare a state emergency so they can oversee the problem, whether that means putting this as a state-sanctioned hospital or finding another organization. I don't care. We need to take action. Now is our time to act, and if the state hesitates to do anything, the health of our entire Commonwealth is in jeopardy. And I hope that my colleague will be able to further elaborate on this. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Alyssa Patel, and after that is Dr. Eric D.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Patel. I'm also a resident of Leamester and a former member of the Chanahaway Youth Advisory Council. I was shocked hearing about the closure of the Neshoba Valley Medical Center and Carney Hospital, and sympathize with the displaced people who have no place to go. In Leamester, we have faced a similar situation during how healthcare access, especially in rural areas, is looking more and more bleak. The birthing center of our local hospital was closed, and the outrage was tremendous. Expected mothers in Leamester now have to travel to just 15 miles further, even in an emergency. And now because of corporate greed, the residents of Air stuff their similarly. The closest major hospital is Udonas Memorial in Leamester. It's also 15 miles further from the Neshoba Valley Medical. And a patient cannot afford that in an emergency. For a person having a heart attack, stroke, or giving birth, every second is crucial to a positive outcome. Even the additional strain on the overflow EBR is unacceptable. The average wait time in Massachusetts's emergency room is 131 minutes. For patients in unstable, critical condition, that could be deadly. The added strain from other hospitals creates lengthy wait times and more dangerous situations for patients. More than 2,000 residents will be jeopardizing their lives due to Stewart's corporate greed. This is not a feasible solution. With cooperation and negotiation, I know the state can come to a better solution than displacing and endangering residents. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Dr. Eric D.
Eric.
Okay, thank you. James Hale.
Yes, sir.
And then Len Patel.
I don't have a title, I apologize. I have a name, though. It's James Hale. Some of you know me as the American constitutionalist from Neshoba, out of Leamester. But here today, I was a dependent who stayed on Devens with my parents. My mom's a retired major from Hale Intelligent School, Hale Hall. Now, my belly was donated by the Hale family. And I would leave Air High School and go to Devens, where we were staying in Zalerno Circle. But on my way home, I would stop by Hale Hall, Hale Intelligent School, and pick my mother up from school. And her boyfriend was in 10th Mountain Division, now my stepfather. And I used to swim near Lake with 10th Special Forces group as a kid, who joined the military myself. And after I got out, I had many issues, and including arthritis in my back, PTSD, childhood glaucoma, carpal tunnel tendonitis. I've recently been diagnosed with being a diabetic type 2. I have ulcers in my stomach, bleeding in my stomach, bacteria in my stomach. I was supposed to go tomorrow to Neshoba Valley. They called me today for the preparation stuff. They found out that one of my medical prescriptions was medical marijuana. So now it's on a week hold. So now I got it for the 23rd, and set it tomorrow. And there's a lot of this discrimination that I deal with, with marijuana. And when I started that program, it was with Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance. That's one group I'm surprised I haven't seen or heard from on this issue because they were a very good advocate for the medical marijuana program. One of the things that I hear often as people came up, including the state of accident officials, is intentional infliction of emotional and financial distress. I went through five discrimination lawsuits over having a service dog, or just being disabled, or on medical marijuana, which right now, I was trying to get back to Wisconsin after dealing with...